Call this meeting to order. The date is December the 7th, 2022. All commissioners are present. Also present is Charles Rudd, City Manager, Bobby Pickens, our City Attorney. And I think we're good with that, right? And Captain Usri with the Putnam County Sheriff's Department. With that, Commissioner Banks, if you'd like to use an indication, please stand if you can.
Your Father, Big Gracious God, we thank you today for your loving kindness and your multitude of mercy. God, we continuously ask you for your prayers to be upon us, be upon the commission, and our community, and adjacent to our community, and put love in our heart. We act in your San Tico's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, may I have a second to preach? Ma'am.
What would you like to say?
Today is December 7th. A day which we live in infamy. I would like for everybody to have a moment of silence if we could for those soldiers and sailors who were killed on the very first day of World War II. If you were. Amen.
With that, I find my... We've got a lot going on still this month. We've had a lot already happen. First, I would like to say thank you. We had an outstanding weekend. Can you not hear me?
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. We had an outstanding weekend with... We thanked the Lions Club for the gospel scene. We thanked CCVC for the lighting of the park. It was just a wonderful celebration on Friday night. Everybody walked around with smiles on their faces, which is what we all hoped for. And joy in their hearts. And then on Saturday for the parade. It was a nice parade. And then, of course, the Yacht Club. Thank you. The fireworks, the whole afternoon. But the fireworks were spectacular this year. And I think it's going to be hard for anybody to compare their fireworks to our fireworks. So we thank everybody for all that you've done to just lift up this community. And so then as we go forward into the month, we have the Concerned Citizens is having the Sparkle and Shine. That's their Christmas gala. That's going to be on December 17th, a Saturday at 7:00 PM at the Women's Civic Club. We're also going to have on the 17th, we have a resident who really wanted to do this for children. So from nine to one. Please start. That's okay? Everyone silence your phone if you can. It's a nice little jingle. Thank you. On the 17th, from nine to one, she's having Christmas in the Park for the children. It's a free event. And she's going to have activities and things for the children to do. And then our high schoolers have projects that they've been given. And so one of them is they have to plan an activity. So our first group is going to have Grinch Give Back on the 21st in Evil Lion Park. And I believe it's from three...
Nine.
Nine.
No, twelve to seven.
Twelve to seven. Twelve to seven. It's going to be just a drop-in. Please come in. They're going to have cookies. I think they're going to have cookie decoration. They're going to have different things, and the band will play, and they're going to perform. And they're trying to raise money for children that aren't as fortunate at Christmas. So kudos to those children that they are doing this. And they're all excited. They've come in several times this week, and I just love to see that enthusiasm. We also have going on the Brooklyn Peninsula Historic Society is going to have their Pop Life Christmas Lunch, or Dinner. And that's going to be on the 15th at four o'clock at the Archives Building. And then we've also got, this is really exciting, and Sheree, thank you, and Danny Miller and the Historic Society for doing this, is the cleaning out of the Old Jail. I don't know how many of you know where the Old Jail is. So if you're available Friday morning, it starts at 10:00 AM. Sheree, you want them to meet down at the Old Jail? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Meet down there. I would make sure I wore rubber boots. And show up and volunteer and help clean out that jail and see what we can do with the jail. And with that, I think I have, I think I have all those announcements. I also want to thank Karen. That Karen and Liz Gomez worked Saturday night till at least midnight. I know Karen was here till at least midnight. And Liz just happened to walk by and saw her in the window and stopped in and helped her decorate the Commission Meeting Room. And so we're very appreciative of that. Karen always puts a lot into it. She also bought her own tree. So she has a live tree in our main lobby. And then I want to really say thank you to Charles because the lights in the park are just spectacular. So let's give him if we can. People blowing my phone up, calling me. Oh my gosh. Even, even the south of here, they called me as I passed through town not knowing what was going on to say, it just looks, it just looks wonderful. And if you walk through there or drive through there in the evening, it's really neat to see that people are walking through the park just looking at the lights. So thank you, Charles, for everything that you did to make that happen. And we have residents. Craig, he helped with that also. So we have a lot of residents who helped with that, but I totally want to thank you. And so with that, I know I'm taking up a lot of time, but, and this is not on the agenda, but this kind of came up suddenly. And I don't know how many of you read the paper, but our Downtown Partnership and the city, we have been given the Main Street designation from the Secretary of State. This is something that has taken a lot of sweat and tears and time that everyone has put in to getting this application submitted to the Secretary of State, the work involved here in the community for its infancy. And he actually came to Crescent City on Monday. And he toured the city, and he spent with us close to three hours. And he walked up and down Central Avenue. He came through the Archives. He went down to Evil Lion. He visited several of our restaurants, went to the Basonic and Lake Stella. And was just really enamored, I think, with our, with our community. And also with what we've got going on here. So for all of us that, you know, it should make us very proud. And so with that, I would like to do a presentation to our Downtown Partnership. So at this time, if we could have Mary Robbins. You would come forward.
I think the whole board is here.
Yeah, the whole board's here. So Mary Robbins, Mary is our president. So Mary is the one that really, she just ran with it. She ran with it, and she puts in, she works pretty much full-time, and she does this pretty much full-time. So Mary, as our president, you want me, is Ashley, he's Ashley. She's, Ashley couldn't be here because he, he was here. But we've got Connie Grove. She's our treasurer. So Connie, you want to come? We've got Cheryl Galavitz. She's our secretary. And we have Trish Hart, and she is our Promotions Chair. So this is our Executive Board along with Christina Marie. Christina, come up. So I'm going to present them, I want to present them with the letter that we received on Thursday where he signed this. And maybe if you can talk a little bit. And also, we have got quite a few of our board members here. Should we have, are those all of them here?
Yeah, there's quite a few.
So maybe if, once we do this, let's get a picture also with all of our board members. Everybody together, if you can. But Mary, it's just such an honor. This is something that, you know, like I said, you have worked, all of you have worked so hard. This whole community of those that were wanting this and really pushing for this. They've shown up. They've painted light poles in July. You know, when it was blistering hot. They run these arts and farmers markets that people are talking about. You know, one of the, Mark Hart, who was with the Secretary, who was with Secretary Byrd the other day, he said that. He saw one of the signs, and he says, "I just love that, that that's happening in this community and wanted to know a little bit more about that." The movies in the park, the Help with the Day of the Dead. Just everything that you've gotten behind and helped spearhead. And, you know, you've done it on your time. And for that, I just, I can't thank you enough. And on behalf of the Commission, I thank everyone here got behind this and supported this when we said we were going to go for that designation. And so I just want you to know that, that we're all very proud, very proud of everything that you've have done to lift up this community and try to revitalize it. Thank you, Mary. Let's get a picture with this Commission, okay, first?
Sure.
And, or you want to speak first, and then we'll get, then we'll get pictures.
As Michelle said, I'm Mary Robbins, and I'm the President of the Crescent City Downtown Partnership. Is this one? Is this one? And I want to start out by thanking, thanking the city and thanking the mayor for this opportunity. The mayor has come out to all of our events, all of our projects, and she's the first one who has thanked us and recognized all the hard work we've put into this. So for that, thank you. We appreciate that recognition. I want to thank our City Manager, who's had the vision and the plan and the experience and the guidance, and most particularly the patience in seeing us along this path. It's, he's been, he's been very gentle during our learning process, and it was. This is, this was a learning curve. None of us, when we started into this, thought that we would be in these positions. We just came out to help. We came out to clean light poles. We came out to, to paint. We came out to clean light poles, we came out to, to paint light poles. We came out to, to just talk about the downtown partnership and none of us really thought that, that this is where it would really go. He, he guided us through this, through this process and for that, Charles, thank you. Thank you to Christina, who is our Main Street Director and CRA Manager. And she's been one of us on the team. She's jumped in there and helped us with every aspect of this. And her months and months and months of hard work on the application are very much appreciated. Thank you for that. I want to thank all of our volunteers who have come out, helped us sell hot dogs, helped us paint light poles, helped us decorate light poles. Thank you. And particularly to our executive committee, thank you because it's, it's been a lot of fun, but it's also been a lot of hard work and a lot of hours. And, and thanks to all of our spouses for all the hours that we've had to put into this to make this a success. I want to thank our board, many of which are here today, for supporting us and being the oversight, coming to those meetings and listening to us and giving us out and giving us direction.
Mary, can we have them come up as well?
Yes. Would the board members please come up?
It's important to note that the board, half, over half the board is comprised of the leadership of the other organizations in the community. That's why it's called a partnership.
This is Frank Bonza with Yacht Club. We have Nancy and with the library board, Susan with the Women's Club. And then everybody else, Cherie. Cherie, if you're on this side. So thank you, thank you all for helping us, appreciate that. I'd like to thank our donors because without those resources, we couldn't stay afloat and, and do the projects and the events that we've been doing and, and it will keep us going and we appreciate their contributions. And lastly, I'd like to thank the citizens of Crescent City who've come out and supported us, supported our events, have come to Movie in the Park, have come to the market and have given us positive response, positive feedback on social media. It means a lot to us and we appreciate it. Thanks so much and thanks so much for this honor, appreciate it.
Let's take a picture. See, here in commute.
I don't have my phone.
Who's the picture thing? Charles, Charles can.
Let's move over here, but please watch.
Yes, just watch the cords, if you would. Everybody get a picture. We've got the board, we've got the commission in here, we've got the board in here. I know your board members could not be here tonight, unfortunately. Do you want them to stand? We're meeting now. Yeah, go ahead and we'll have the commissioner, we'll have the commissioner stand so they can have their picture made. Commissioner? Hold on, I'm going to get back here.
Mayor, you're vertically challenged, you might want to be in the front.
Yes. Vertically challenged. In the front. I'll hand you the ladder, I'll hand you the ladder, how's that? Or we'll hold it together. Okay, I don't want to block Nancy.
No problem.
One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. It was a really big day on Monday and I know a lot of people had sore feet, but just knowing that he gave us that time in our businesses made us all very proud, made us all very proud. Okay, so with that, let's.
Could I be recognized to make one announcement?
Sure.
Okay. I have an announcement. I was in a meeting today with, this is on a less happy subject, although maybe we can do something positive about it. I was in a meeting today with the Homeless Continuum of Care. And just to let you know, the date is more or less fixed for the annual Housing and Urban Development Point-in-Time Homeless Count that has to be conducted throughout the country. In Putnam County, that will be Monday, January the twenty-third, including in South Putnam. Volunteers are always needed, donations chiefly of things for goodie bags, maybe a breakfast or a lunch are welcome. There should be a training session sometime in January. As well, there will be a planning session by Zoom on January the sixth between ten thirty and eleven thirty. So if you or your business or your church or your civic organization would like to be involved in assisting, you can contact me and I will put you in touch with the Continuum of Care, which is based in Gainesville. A lot of people have helped in the past and I think greatly need it.
But you'll make sure to, to relay information to Karen so that she can have that as well.
Absolutely, but it just, just came up today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to move to our approval of minutes. We've got the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two and the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I shall move second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Yeah, for November fourteenth, that brought us to Karen's attention. On page one, there's a percentage relating to the election that's incorrect. The number forty-eight point five percent that she has in there, that's, there's some kind of typo, it's not mathematically correct. And Karen said she would find the correct number.
Will you amend your motion for, with changes?
Yes.
Three seconds?
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So moved. With that, we're going to go ahead and we're going to open up public comments at this time.
Thank you.
Please come forward, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Danny Miller. I'm a proud Crescent City native and taxpayer. Our historic school is slated for demolition in the spring. The school decision-making process was conducted at the county level with no opportunity for public input nor any involvement from city leadership. Despite multiple meetings over the past year, multiple city manager, the mayor, and the school district involving myself and other concerned citizens, there has been no discernible action taken to advocate for the interests of the city. Why not? There have also been repeated requests by Commissioner Bavita and by citizens to agenda the school redevelopment issue for discussion and public input. Why has this not occurred? At a recent meeting, Commissioner Bavita asked that the district be invited to discuss the specifics of their redevelopment plan. Unbelievably, the district declined that invitation. Why not? Our mayor, city manager, and Commissioner Burton have asserted that the city has no authority to influence the redevelopment of the school. We now know that this assertion is demonstrably false. In fact, the school district is required to follow our comp plan and land development code with some exceptions. What are a few of the development issues? Site landlord view, for example, noise and landscape buffers, parking and traffic stacking, setbacks and structure location. A tree ordinance, there are historic live oak trees on the property. Will we allow the district to bulldoze them along with almost everything else? Historic preservation, our local school board member, Holly Pickens, told me that she had been assured that the historic facade of the school would be preserved. Will this prove to be just another hollow promise from the district? Last summer, the school district was asked in writing the following. Quote, "Is the district committed to designing a replacement school in an architecturally sympathetic manner so as to preserve the historic character of the school neighborhood and city?" Unquote. There has been no response. Why not? Traffic, the school was built at a time when surrounding neighborhoods were filled with families of children who walked or biked to and from school. Most students now travel by bus or by car. Traffic generated by a new school will choke the surrounding neighborhoods and cause backups on Central Avenue and U. S. Seventeen. Again, last summer, the school district was asked in writing, "Have you considered the associated traffic impact on an historic residential neighborhood given the increased student population? If yes, will you share those traffic studies with the public?" Unquote. Again, there has been no response. Why not? Demolition, that's a big issue that can get paused with bulldozers. Design, this is big, the district has repeatedly offered assurance that residents will be included in the design process. Now, we read in the Blackadder Daily News, our prime source of information for the district, that the reviewers will be students, parents, and teachers on this one.
Mr. Miller, I need you to please wrap this up.
Yep. Surely, we must have a seat at the table. In conclusion.
Mr. Miller, I'm asking you to please wrap this up.
Uh, I'm trying, I'll lay the issue, I'm trying to make a recommendation if I may. In conclusion, these example development review considerations and many more are far beyond the sole capabilities of city staff and residents. This will be the largest construction project in the city's history. The city must immediately engage our planner and/or other design and engineering professionals to guide us through this process. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my thoughts. You've been patient, you patiently listened, uh, thank you. Now it's your turn.
Thank you.
Let's say good.
Thank you. We appreciate you, we admire you, thank you.
No questions or comments?
No questions or comments, time's up.
I hope you'll rise to meet your responsibilities.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gerald Watson, four-four North Lake Street. First of all, I'd like to say I'm here tonight not on behalf of any organization, Rotary Club, the Lions Club, conservative, you got, you have, I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. Secondly, in all honesty and fairness, I'd like to applaud the work that the, the partnership has done. You know, I had the opportunity to be involved in some of the early planning meetings, very well fought out, very well orchestrated. My schedule didn't allow me to continue to participate, but I got to tell you that what, what the organization has accomplished in the time it has been in existence has been more than I've seen and we've had many initiatives in this area. So I applaud you, I applaud Charles' work that you've done and bringing this all off to fruition. And I got to take you probably the hardest working city manager when it comes to hanging Christmas lights I've ever seen. That said, also being very candid, I'm totally blown away and discouraged and disappointed with the way in which the, the city has handled the city. And I'm speaking to the commission, you mayor, Charles, this whole issue related to the gospel, the gospel event and the manner in which the Lions Club was effectively kicked out of the park and told they had to go somewhere else with no support, no help, in the dark, and had to pay fifty dollars in fact for that space. Now, I'm not here to litigate the facts, I'm not an attorney, but it's important to understand the difference between facts and appearances, okay? The facts are that that happened, that they told, they couldn't be, even though they had, the facts are that could be that, maybe they put their application in, maybe they didn't earlier, those are facts that certainly could be uncovered. The facts are that they were told and that they had to, despite when it was brought to the attention, couldn't set up in the park anymore, had to go across the street, those are facts. The, the, the facts are also that through the efforts of the Crescent City Rotary Club, the Palaca Rotary Club, and our members, that we reached out to the kind offices of the sheriff's department who stepped up to the plate and they love and valor to invite the support that we needed with lights and signs to make it work along with a lot of other citizens in the community. Those are facts. The appearances, however, paint a different picture and they're left to one's own, one's own, what's that? How much more time?
You have three minutes, you have three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes, you have three minutes, no, we've already had three minutes.
Oh.
So I just need, I'm sorry, it goes by fast, I just need you to wrap it up.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, let me wrap it up and I'm going to touch real quick on the cigar issue. Because the, that, and I don't know whether we have any exposure counsel, but with regard to the way, the manner in which those grants were issued, and, and look, if I'm a business owner, I don't applaud any business owner for going after, going after funny, I understand, okay? But I think it's critically important, especially looking forward. I, I think there needs to be an accounting of what happens, how it happens, it needs to be equitable. And I, and I think that in going forward, you know, if, if we, it's either a program for all downtown business owners, you can't go up and down the street with a bag of money, okay, and handpick and decide.
Mr. Watson, I'm sorry, your time is up, I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, sorry, I would, go up and down the street to, to decide who's going to get money and who's not. That's not fair, that's inequitable, it leaves the wrong impression, no matter how many secretaries step to town. Because the reality is.
Thank you. I, I've asked you, I've asked you politely, our time is up and Karen has to everybody. Three minutes.
I, I respect that.
I know, I know you do. And I'm sorry that, you know, but this is three minutes.
No problem.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Dorian Freeman, one-twenty Franklin Avenue, from Old Park. I go to church at First Presbyterian here in Crescent City and that's why I'm speaking to this issue. I was last minute in charge of putting up signs for our T. I thought because I had seen these on every street corner, that where I put the signs would be okay. So I put out signs, it took me nearly two hours to do ten signs because I wanted to space them out, okay. I come back the next day, they're gone. And no rhyme or reason, they're just gone. Okay, I find out later that they can't be on the right way. These were also pulled, except there's one out by the RV campground there that's still there and my sign was behind it. My sign got pulled, that one did not. Also, you have the thrift store sign that's here constantly and it's on the street right away. So I think it needs to be fair for all. And ours is, you know, it was date specific. It wasn't like we were going to keep it up forever like this. So I would ask the commission if they would review this and give us a little more clearance on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers?
Mary Robbins, five oh eight North Lake Street. And while the city has been very, very supportive of us and we appreciate that, you've been driving this process for a long time and helping us to receive our Main Street designation. I just want it to be known that there was one critic, one person who was undermining us and has been for quite a few months, both on social media. And the critic has written a letter to the state just prior to getting our designation. And that particular critic is one of the commissioners. I have the letter here, I'd like for you to have that.
Is there a copy for it?
It's a copy for it.
Just thought to go back to the listeners, me.
That's here, that's a, that's per second page. Do you have Karen, one, just for the record, please? So you can put that one to the record, Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
And commissioners, this is something that we have to be very careful of, that, you know, as a body, once we make a decision, we have to stand behind it, even if we were against it, it's just something that is, that we do do. So we're all going to have decisions that we've made here that quite possibly we weren't in favor of. But when the body, when we as a body speak, we just ask that everyone in the commission stand behind that decision. So, okay. Okay, any other public comment at this time?
I'm really bad at asking questions, I'm going to go into anyways.
State your name.
My name is Rachel Kavanaugh, live at five oh five North Avenue Avenue. I was just wondering when we were getting our toders.
Oh.
Like a date, nothing.
Your toders.
Nothing controversial, just a question.
They're on order, so as soon as we, you know, we're also waiting for a dumpster for one of the streets that we have to clean out that has to occur. So, you know, they're all...
I just wondered a date, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, we are from Chestnut. I just had a comment on what was just stated, once we make a decision, we stick by it. This commission voted to keep our garbage cans. And at the next meeting, the mayor said, "I've changed my mind." So I have a problem with, once we make a decision, we stick by it, because that is not what happened.
However, I have the opportunity, any of us have the opportunity, when you have voted, that you asked that it be brought back up for reconsideration, and that is what happened. And the commission could have said no, and I would have stood behind that. So, there you go. Okay, with that, we have any other further public comment? Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close public comment at this time, and let's take out the sheriff's report. Captain Esri.
Thank you, mayor, commission. Good evening, everyone. First off, well, we had a great weekend, obviously. It was very manpower intensive, and one thing I learned through this whole process is do not take vacation on such a busy weekend or a weekend before something like this is going on. So I took the mental note. So we'll start on some of our crimes, like I said, the crimes that are reported to FTLA that show your statistics in the city for, you know, what's occurring. So the first one we have here is 117 Main Street. Was a theft or a victim before a wood chipper was stolen from outside of the residence. This was a, basically, a crime of opportunity. It was a wood chipper that can be picked up, essentially. Was left out outside of the privacy fence that was there on the yard. We have really nothing to go on. I refuted what I could of the LPRs, which is license plate readers that we have here in the city. And I wasn't able to see anything on those cameras to be able to reveal any kind of information on the suspect. So as of right now, it's still an active investigation. We're checking our local property crimes division, our detectives that are assigned to this area, are checking for anything to do with online, which is, it basically essentially hooks us up on shops and things like that, for us to see that equipment. So nothing further on that one so far. The next was a, the victim reported a hundred foot of chain link fence stolen from a property where they're currently residing in a camper on the property. Again, that is still an active investigation, doing the same thing, looking for LPRs, our neighborhood candidates and things like that, didn't come up with anything, and have nothing to go on on that one. The third one was a little bit interesting. This was a 507 Oakwood Street. The victim reported a firearm stolen from his vehicle. Unfortunately, the victim works in Daytona and has made numerous stops since going back and forth to work from here. He does not know where it was taken from. So just out of caution, that was the place he reported it at. So that's kind of the place where we have to take the crime again. We can't verify that that firearm was actually stolen from Crescent City. Run it up as that, just in case. Any questions on that report?
If you have a question. Yeah, actually, I do. When you say 117 Main Street, is it north or south?
Sorry, it's...
North of central or south of central?
It is gonna be north of central.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Please, please, please.
Next is our traffic crash data. And again, we had some minor fender benders in parking lots that we didn't actually pull reports on these, were actually reported traffic crashes. You'll see the first one here was at 105 Summit Street, I'm sorry, is at Palmara's Restaurant. A car was backing out of the parking lot, and as you know, the parking lot there is very close to the roadway. So a car was backing out and backing into the path of a vehicle traveling south on Summit Street. There were no injuries reported in that one. I made a typing error here on the second one, you see Vernon and Summit. We're seeing that comment at that intersection. Vehicles are pulling out in front of people. So again, this was a two-vehicle crash with one injured reported, minor injury. The vehicle's making a right turn on the Summit Street, pulling the path of a vehicle traveling south on Summit. It seems common for that intersection, so maybe something we need to sit down and think about trying to...
We'll need that data for red light.
Yeah.
Yes, we've been trying to do it.
Yes. So any questions on those? On the next page, you'll see here, this is the, basically, the calls for service and traffic stops, traffic crashes, and the suspicious vehicles and persons. So you had a total of 131 traffic stops, fifty-three, I'm sorry, 131 calls for service, fifty-three of those being traffic stops, two traffic crashes, and ten suspicious persons and vehicles that were on view by the deputies that worked in Crescent City. Which left you with about a sixty-eight calls for service for the month. That's about two calls, a little over two calls a day. Any questions?
I have one. When you make a traffic stop, do you often give tickets for those traffic stops? Or why are you making those traffic stops?
It's officer discretion. So it all depends, it could be running a stop sign, it could be your tags expired, it could be your driver's license expired because you hit the LPR, and they're working the LPRs. It could be a number of things. And I can't require my deputies to write citations, that is their discretion, so that's...
I'm just curious, why are you gonna stop, and what type of citations would you give out?
I know I've tasked my guys with watching that intersection of Summit and Vernon very heavily, and they've been doing those traffic stops because everybody's done it. I have to, you come up to a stoplight, it's red, there's nobody coming down the road, and you kind of roll through there, I've done it myself. But we've gotta try to make people know when they go through that intersection, that's a little different intersection, and you'll be watching out, so.
Captain, highway patrol is a little stiffer than the county, right?
Sir?
On tickets, highway patrol, but fairly they stop you, you don't get a piece of paper. Highway patrol, what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, correct. And like I said, they're allowed to give discretion as well. I don't know what their data is on how many stops they make, how many traffic citations they write. I'm not sure what that is, so I'm not, like I said, if their main job is working traffic crashes and doing just traffic stops, and unfortunately, like I said, it's officer discretion, so not everybody needs a ticket. Sometimes it can be handled another way, so. And if that's something you would like, no trials is actually how many tickets were thrown in the city of Crescent City, we can definitely look into that for you. But that's an option, you can talk about it. On the next page, you'll see the six-month comparisons. This is where we compare each month to the month before. This is very tricky for me, because we did have, from last month to this month, we had a three-hundred percent increase in crimes, because we went from zero to three. And one of those being that firearm, and we're not sure of where, you know, that was stolen from, but I'll take the hit on it and say it was in Crescent City. So that's, any questions with the six-month comparison? I know we're coming up on December, January, we'll probably cover December. And then maybe February, looking at doing it yearly before to see what the difference is in from last year and this year. That's probably something the colonel or sheriff will be involved in. I'll just do the workup on it, and they'll probably do the presentation just like the colonel did last time. So that'll be interesting to see. As of right now, I don't know what that is, because the numbers are so low. It could variate very much differently with just two or three crimes. And what we do is, is we generally go back through all those reports again to make sure, sometimes I'll call them back, and victims have found their firearms and things like that, so we go back through these reports and make sure that we're giving an accurate number of what's actually going on in Crescent City. So that's pretty time consuming, and I also do that for my district as well.
Thank you. Maybe any other questions for the captain?
I do. Captain Esri, I know the sheriff's office is not animal control, but I have been corresponding with a disabled individual who lives on, I think, the 400 block of Chestnut, at the very south end of town. He is very close to Reed Avenue. He's an amputee, and he gave me permission to share all this. He is apparently at his wits' end. He said that there are quite a few loose dogs that are running around in his area, including, you know, the agricultural property, the agricultural property that's just south of Reed Avenue.
Yes.
The dogs don't live there, there's no homes there, but he said they're running about there. They come into his yard, he and his wife and family feel very unsafe. He uses a walker to get, he parks them back and uses a walker. They just feel very, very unsafe. They've contacted animal control, animal control has gotten one dog. But it's a serious problem, and I, just between the commission, and I don't know if the sheriff's office can do anything, but I'll be happy to share with you his name, and I'm pretty sure I can find his exact address. But I want the commission to know this also, because he's been writing for about a week, and he says he's contacted city and animal control, it's been quite a while.
Okay. Is that the residence at the intersection of Reed and Chestnut there?
They're on Chestnut.
Is it the last house, or is it the second house with the shed?
I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
So the last time I was there, there was, there were two bulldogs on the property at that time. And I also noticed a dog on the other side of the road on that property that you're speaking of.
Right.
So what was happening there is, one of the dogs were in heat, and everybody knows when dogs are in heat, they'll chew through fences, they'll chew through collars, or do whatever they can to get there. So we found that there was a trail that actually goes through that piece of agricultural property and goes throughout the other side to, what's the name of that junction?
Junction.
Junction. It actually goes all the way through there, and I walked it, and believe me, I picked all the things off my pants, and it was anyway. So we walked it, and we seen a trail, so we know they're coming from that way somewhere, from off a junction. So we just couldn't figure that out, because you really couldn't describe the dog very well. And I talked to the gentleman across the street from the house. There was a second dog that was there that was untied. He came over to me, bulldog, laid on his back and let me scratch his belly. The gentleman there said, "Don't mess with that dog, that's the lady down the street. He's climbed or dug under the fence coming down here for this dog in heat." So the dog in heat is actually tied up on the property. And I couldn't do anything with that dog, obviously, because the lady that lives there, the dog, me and you talked about this, mayor, she claimed ownership of it, and mom wants, Jan wants to take the dog, and if somebody's claiming ownership of it, we can't take animals without somebody's permission. Unless we do a seizure, if there's malnutrition, or we think that there's some kind of criminal case there. So I would be happy to get that number from you, to work with him, to do whatever we need to do with the dog.
Okay, 'cause the update is, I'm just looking here, what he sent me today. He says the post office has actually refused to deliver mail mail because they don't have a mailbox at the street. He's not able to put it up because of the situation with the dogs. So I don't know how long ago it was, we talked to him, but apparently, there's still a dog problem, because these are dated yesterday and today, I think.
We've been dealing with this for over a month now. Now, no animal control, and he's been going out there, I believe, in the mornings. And if it's underneath a building, though, they cannot pull that animal. That's, was my understanding from Cheryl, that they cannot pull those animals out from underneath the building.
Well, it is very concerning, I mean, if they're not delivering mail, these dogs are this vicious, and this is only people that are complaining about these, that vicious of a dog over there. I've been over there numerous times, and I haven't seen, the animals that I've seen over there haven't been, but obviously, it's an issue that I need to probably give them to Nyla. So if we can get together after the meeting, I will get my guys over there. The animal patrol officer that I work with that will get these dogs, parks his truck here in the evenings. He comes through here every day and says, "If I ever need anything, he will take the dogs for me." So I can take care of this.
I thought you might have contact.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions of the captain? Yes?
Do I need to say?
Yes, please.
Lisa Dempsey, 330 Pine Street. Yes, those dogs have gone after me on my bike quite a few times. The dogs at the residence have gone after me and my husband. They did call them back, they were very aggressive. We do have a mailbox, Ms. DeVito, we have a mailbox that we're giving, an extra mailbox that we're giving to the post lady. So she's gonna take it over there tomorrow, they have to put it up. But we have an extra mailbox we're gonna give them. But yeah, we, it's, there's a sign, I don't know if you've seen it. Somebody put up a sign, vicious dogs, with an arrow. That's a read, to warn people, because they come out of...
I don't have my bike back there.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm just saying, yes, they have, they are out at various times, you're not quite sure when they're gonna be out. But if you're aggressive with them, they will back down. But not everybody is in an aggressive mood, you know, I yelled at them, they looked, but... Anyway, so I'm gonna get, we'll give the mailbox to them, and I guess you guys will be working on this, because they are, you know, we have a sign up to warn the neighbors about the vicious dogs.
Thank you. Thank you for donating the mailbox.
I have to.
Thank you, thanks, we are from Chestnut. This is not a dog question, but logistics, where, I got arrested. Where does the sheriff's suspension warrant need, since everyone has to be out of the school?
We're still working, I think, we're still working on it.
I'm gonna answer you, I'll call you after this, or do I come?
I think we'll have to address that question.
So obviously, me and the mayor and the city manager have been talking about this, and we don't know that right now. We don't. What we're gonna have to do is, but the colonel has assured me that we will still be in Crescent City, and when the colonel, and he speaks on behalf of the sheriff, when he tells me we're gonna be in Crescent City, we're gonna be in Crescent City, whether it's in the cook shed until they get us, dig the school thing, or whatever it is, I'm just being facetious, but we will figure it out, because the colonel knows how I enjoy being in this city, I enjoy the drive down here, and this is my getaway, and that was part of my negotiation with him, if I was coming to a district, is that I got to South End and I got Crescent City. So I took the extra added responsibility that nobody else has, and I hoped that he would make good with his promises to me, so.
I know he's working on that, too. He's working on that, too. To be continued, we'll let you know as soon as everything works out with the school district and with the sheriff's office.
And just so you know, this is kind of what I got, is I got from the school district that it looked like it may be about three years before we have to move, so I was very comfortable. I said, "We've got plenty of time to now in March, May."
Yeah.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Any other questions of the captain before we close out the sheriff's report? One funny side note, when we were doing the lighting, please thank the colonel, because just as the lights were turning on, all of a sudden, he's driving by, and his lights go on, and I said, "Well, maybe he's celebrating with us," and then he continued past us. And somebody else was not so happy about the lights being turned on. But it was all happened right at the same time, like, "That's the colonel," and his lights were going. I'm like, "Well, that's nice of him," but...
It's actually funny, because he said he was on his way home, and then when I seen, as I was pulling up in my driveway, I seen on my cat that he was doing a traffic stop. I text him at that moment and said, "Go home." Spent some long hours, really long hours, so...
He does, all of you do, all of you do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna close out the sheriff's report. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you all.
We're gonna move on to our business items. Charles, you wanna start?
Thank you, mayor. This first item was introduced last month at your meeting, so you could go through the report. Tonight, we have Andrew Green here from the Forum of Our Association to present the results of the rate review. And then what we're staff is requesting is direction to come back to you with an ordinance in January for any rate changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for being here.
We'll go over the packet you have, it's the same packets on screen here. You have any questions as we go along, just stopping. From the first page here, I know it's hard to see up there. Tonight, we'll be talking about increasing the water rates by fifteen percent, and the wastewater rates by five percent.
I think it's important, actually, to begin discussion by reminding that last year, last two years, at least, the waterfront has been in the red. Like, this most recent... This most recently closed out sixty thousand dollars in the red. Previous year, we avoided that by not making the overhead transfer to the general fund.
And I believe in trying to win a rate review, the water funds also in the red.
Also in the red.
And that did come, my understanding when I look back through the old agendas, that that did come forward and look through the minutes. And it looked like the commission at that time tabled any more discussions as far as raising it until they looked at budget, so.
Mayor? Before Mr. Green gets started, could I ask one question?
Sure.
Thank you for being here. A question I think I had last month when we discussed this was, how do our existing rates compare to the rates of other small cities? Do, do you know that information or can you get it for us?
Why don't we have him get the report and then follow up with that? Can you do that?
I can go ahead and answer that if you.
Okay, sure.
I can get you some rates from other systems. We don't like to compare one system with another system. Just because our operating budget is completely different, debt service can be completely different. So it's hard to compare one system to another. So we normally don't do that.
Right, but from the standpoint of the customer, I think that when people hear our water rates are going up, the one thing I want to know is, what would I be paying in a, in a similar municipality? So from the customer point of view, I, I think that might be helpful, or might not. Anyway, thank you so much.
On page three, you'll see your drinking water revenue requirement. The red line that you see is where you're currently at. You're currently covering your operating supply expenses. But capital and transfers you are not currently covering. The dotted line that you see for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four are both fifteen percent increases. And starting in twenty twenty-five through the end of the schedule here are five percent increases annually.
As we go through these pages, just to make it easy, if you have a question about it, can we address it at that time?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that way, cause there's several pages, there's quite a few pages.
Yes, and the next paper actually breaks the screen down further for you.
Okay, thank you.
Page four, it breaks down the water revenue requirements a little further for you. It's twenty twenty-three, you can see your operating expenses. You have no debt service on the water, water side. You do have the capital of thirty thousand eight hundred, we did add that in for asset replacement costs. And that'd get broken down a little further into the study if we go along here. On the existing rates, you can see revenue from existing rates is three twenty-eight two hundred currently. That's in the red by about fifty-two thousand dollars. The proposed rates, be about a forty-nine thousand dollar increase for the year. And you can see at the very bottom line, twenty twenty-three, you're, you'll still be in the red by about thirty-four hundred dollars. And then each year you can see you're, you're coming out and you're in the black.
So if you look in the middle of that page, you'll see revenue surplus or deficiency.
Yes.
All the way across, if we do nothing, it shows that we just dig deeper and deeper into the red.
Yeah, about twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two year, about four million dollars in the red.
But if we increase, if we make the increase by twenty twenty-four, we would be solid again, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that page? Okay, move on.
Next we have wastewater. As you can see on the wastewater graph, looks a lot better than the water side. Currently, twenty twenty-three, you're meeting all your requirements. Twenty twenty-four, you're still meeting your requirements, starting twenty twenty-five, that's when you start. Not meeting all your requirements currently. The dotted line is five percent increases every year. We use five percent for cost of living. Right now, the cost of living, five percent is low. It's currently seven point seven percent for the month. Page six, that's the wastewater, breaking it down, the water. As you can see, the existing rates in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, you're currently in the black. If you do nothing, you will start going in the red. Five percent increases for every year. On the bottom line, you can see, you'll stay in the black. Fifty-seven thousand for twenty twenty-three, sixty-three thousand for twenty twenty-four, and it keeps growing year after year. Page seven is your CIP schedule. All of these line items, except for the, the last two, are in your CIP schedule already. They all are listed as grants, so it has no effect on your rates since they are grants. The last two lines, the drinking water twenty-five percent and the wastewater twenty-five percent. That's what we put in the, in the plan for asset replacement. You have no asset management plan. So what we did, all of your maintenance that you have currently budgeted, we subtracted that from what we would normally put in here. That's why these amounts are, are low.
Any questions on this page?
Page eight is your unrestricted fund balance. You're currently at one point three million in your reserves. The addition to the current year call. That's what the increases that we recommended. You can see that you will be adding to your reserves every year. The graph at the bottom, the red line is where we recommend you stay at two hundred and seventy days in reserves. So if you have no income coming into the city, you'll have two hundred and seventy days in the bank to pay the bills. So your reserves are healthy at this time. Page nine and ten is gonna be the rate schedule. You can see current rates and then the increases every year. Twenty twenty-three on this page would be fifteen percent and another fifteen percent in twenty twenty-four. So if you increase your rates right now by fifteen percent, your base would go from nineteen forty-six to twenty-two thirty-eight. It's an increase of two dollars and ninety-two cents. And you do give away, not give away, but it's included in your base, three thousand gallons.
Three thousand gallons?
Three thousand gallons is included in the nineteen forty-six that residents currently pay. And on average, of all your residential customers, they use around three thousand gallons a month, on average.
How much is it for additional gallons?
That's on down, usage charges inside the city limits, three thousand, one gallon to five thousand gallons, it's currently two sixteen. It would go to two forty-eight, that would be an increase of thirty-two cents. Your next tier is five thousand one to nine thousand, it would go from two seventy to three eleven, it's an increase of forty-one cent. Next tier is nine thousand one to fifteen thousand, goes from three twenty-four to three seventy-three, it's forty-nine cent. Fifteen thousand one, twenty thousand, three seventy-nine to four thirty-six, increase of fifty-seven cent. Twenty thousand one gallons or more, it would go from four thirty-two to four ninety-seven, the increase of sixty-five cents.
That's per gallon?
Per thousand gallon.
Per thousand?
Per thousand gallon.
Okay, thank you.
Per thousand gallon.
I just wanted to make sure, just for one gallon, you know?
No.
They can keep taking their showers.
And then you'll see the same, you have the same thing for the outside usage, so the increase would be forty-one cent, up to eighty-one cent for the last tier. And commercial rates would also go up to the same amount, they're the same as the residential rates.
Do you have any questions on this?
I do.
Okay.
One question. When you talk about the commercial rates, do you have any idea what gallon range a big institution like the nursing home would be in as far as monthly use?
I, I know based off all your commercial customers, they use about sixty-three hundred gallons a month. That's all your commercial customers combined. So you will have some customer that use a lot more than sixty-three hundred gallons a month.
That's an average?
That's, that's an average based off overall of all your commercial customers, over annual average. From the last page, you still have, the top portion is still, still water rates for commercial. Down at the green is where the wastewater would start. Five percent increase would go from forty-one oh nine to forty-three fourteen, that's two dollars and five cent a month that it would increase. Commercial will go to forty-eight sixty-six to fifty-one oh nine, which is two dollars and forty-three cent increase. On wastewater, you only, that's the only charge they have for wastewater, your customers have for wastewater. You don't base it off of usage. So they could use a thousand gallons, use ten thousand gallons, this is forty-one oh nine.
Any questions on this?
I have one question. I thought for wastewater, and I might be thinking of someplace else I'd live. I thought there was a charge also based on how many gallons of water you used?
Some places do, some places don't.
But we don't.
The residential, you do not, on commercial, it was, commercial was a little different.
For wastewater?
For wastewater. After, after they use so many thousands of gallons, then they, they get a little bit, I believe. But residential, they do not pay any usage charge on wastewater.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say the operating budget for twenty twenty-three was decreased by twenty-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from twenty twenty-two. So you've had a decrease in your annual budget. So that's helped you out on the rates a little bit. You still need the fifteen percent on water.
That's why. Thank you. We have any questions?
Am I recognized?
Yes.
Okay, right. Mr. Green. Okay, I asked you the first question. One question that someone, a resident, asked me is, how are we supposed to be measuring and taking steps to prevent leakage from the system? Does that affect our bottom line? Or does that really not come into play for our costs and our rates?
If you have water loss, it will, you have a cost from water loss because any water loss you have in the system, it's already been treated water. So you've paid and treated at the plant, the chemicals that use at the plant, you have expense on those chemicals. So you do have an expense that you, you do have on the, any leaks.
And are we, is there some kind of program that you're supposed to follow to ascertain whether you have leaks?
We can, we can do a water audit for the city. I believe, then we do one a couple of years ago.
Back in, I believe it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen?
Nineteen, I believe it was twenty nineteen, right after the rate study, I believe we did it.
Like ten thousand, was it ten thousand gallons that had leaked that they couldn't account for?
You always wanna keep your water loss below ten percent of your total water pump.
Okay, keep it below ten percent. And then my question is, that was a question from somebody else. If we had more customers, for example, if we got more residences or more businesses, would that, in your estimation, have any kind of effect on what we have to charge? In other words, would spreading the service out and having more customers help us all?
Anytime you can add more customers, your revenue is gonna increase, so that's always gonna help. But as you increase customers, you will have more expenses because you have a larger system to also take care of. So it could be positive, it could just be, it could end up being a wash because you have more expenses.
Okay, I guess there's a sweet spot.
Exactly.
And I, that's probably not your area to tell us where that sweet spot is, not with me, our staff, is that right?
Yes, and it's important how, what, if you had any larger users coming in that would use whole water. Be a better, better case for the saver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions from, any other questions?
I've got two, if you don't mind. On the payment schedule, it goes fifteen percent. And then the next year would be the base plus the fifteen percent times fifty percent. And then that base fifteen times fifteen, ten percent, is that correct?
Five percent.
You are on water, correct?
Right.
It's five percent, isn't it?
So, so right now, right now you need fifteen percent as of right now. Then twenty twenty-four, which would be October first of twenty twenty-three, you would need fifteen percent. Then October first of twenty twenty-four, for FY twenty-five, it would change to five percent.
Five percent.
Yes.
Not ten percent.
Yes.
Now, the, we're in the hole sixty-four some thousand dollars or whatever. I've asked the question a couple of times, but how much is that, is the meters and things that we're buying? Or is it that completely water in the hole?
You want to repeat that again?
I understand we're sixty-four thousand dollars in the hole last year.
Correct.
Or.
Pretty close.
It was under the influence that a lot of that, sixty-four thousand, was the cost of meters that we bought. They were pretty substantial and in ninety days, wait time, we bought several of those. And my question is, is how much of the sixty-four thousand would be without the meters? That is actually the water in the hole rather than the equipment nearby?
I, I don't know how much that equipment was at that sixty-four.
It was actually the, all of the equipment, meters were just a piece of that, there were rebuild kits and curb stops and brass fittings. And so all this, and Keith here could talk to the, how much everything went up. We did have to buy some extra stuff because we anticipated not having it available when we needed it. Cause it'd take three months to get it each time.
But my question is, that equipment isn't gonna be spent the year after, the year after the fifteen, the ten percent, the five percent. My question is, how much of that sixty-four thousand is actually water in the hole rather than equipment involved?
Well, I have to, I didn't have a budget with me, I had to look and see what the, cause I think our revenue, I don't remember if our revenue was slightly higher than we projected it to be, even though we ended up in the hole because our expenses were higher.
See, that's what I'm trying to get at, is if, if, I'm trying to vote on whether or not that our water cost is gonna go up or we have to do these fifteen, fifteen and five. Or did we buy enough equipment, we're gonna carry through the three years and we're, really we're not gonna be in the red.
Well, Keith, you, can you speak to how often we get equipment in the state of our system? Is there a reason, it's just keep having to buy parts and equipment, it's just gonna keep getting more expensive?
We've been in the red for the last two years, correct?
Yeah, for several years. So they'll, so buying new stuff is just never gonna, we'll never catch up and have all the parts we need and.
Well, I, well, I guess I'm asking, is it, is this part of the infrastructure that goes through or the water? I mean, could we not get grants and things for the water meters or? I, I, I think the way it looks to me, and I'm new at this, that we're kind of lumping in some other things along with the water that's making the water in red.
Well, the water system, typically in cities, their water system, or their enterprise fund is, is doing very well from a revenue perspective. Not, not even break even, they're, they're doing very well. Ours is in the red, but it's the cost of operating the system. So the system ought to at least, our revenues ought to at least pay for all the parts and equipment and repairs. What we're finding now is, that's year after year, we're coming up short to keep the system functioning.
The revenue that you get from your customers should completely pay for the water system.
Correct.
You should have to pull money from somewhere else. Yes, you need grants.
The revenue from the water should pay for the equipment as well.
What's that?
The revenue from the water should pay for the equipment as well.
I look at it, and maybe I'm incorrect, but I look at it as a business, it's not just water, it's pushing that water out. It's everything that, that you have to do with that water, so it's the entire business. It's everything that, that you have to do with that water, so it's the entire business of the water.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of a layperson on this, and I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, when I do business, you know, when I charge somebody for a set of ribs or something, I might include the rent, uh, you know, the cost of a new smoker or something, I'm charging them for what they use. And so I'm trying to get straight is, you know, all the things that may go wrong in these things ahead of time. And I know we got to come from somewhere to pay for them. But I just didn't know if it was mandated and went through the water use or is there a general fund where we buy supplies or equipment as we need?
No, it's the same thing as a business, it's why it's called an enterprise fund. It's a business where the, the cost of delivering the water needs to be covered by the chart, the cost of the water to the customer.
That, that, I'm not answering my question.
Yeah, there's no other fund to put it front of. Yeah, there's no other, we can't transfer it. Wastewater is the same way, and gas is the same way.
So it's like when you're selling a set of ribs, it needs to cover, make a profit from that list on all the expenses that you have gone into.
And like she said, meters, price of meters has been going up, we've seen prices of chlorine going up a hundred percent. And this, this not wrong.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you, you know, we're looking at the reserve funds. And basically, you're saying we, we got a whole lot of money in these reserve funds.
I think that includes our money for those expansions.
I'm just saying that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure. Is that where you normally would put the ARPA funds, as in a reserve fund? To, to, and, and show that, like, we got money growing on trees in there, or what?
Well, we, we put it there because it was for the water projects, for the water lines design. A little bit in wastewater because of the pump we're getting for the bay lane project, so.
So do we actually have a plan to show where that money is going to be spent? Because right now, it looks like we're just kind of hanging out, and it's got, I mean, you've got a lot of money there.
Yeah, if you look in your finance report, get it in your packet, it, it shows each fund, the water expansion fund, the water sewer renewal and replace fund, wastewater expansion fund. You'll see those figures where it came up at the one point three million, they're together. And that includes the ARPA money, it's only three, a three quarters of a million dollars we're going to spend. Currently plan on spending for water and sewer projects. So if we, if we draw on our reserves to have our operating system break even, that's a, that's a sustainable.
Well, it looks like you, you're, you're, yeah, he's, he, I mean, I'm just looking at the line that kind of, like, when she had about half a million in there, and, and this is in twenty-twenty-three, and we've got, you know, one million four hundred in there. And so you're saying, out of that one million four hundred, if you take five hundred away from there, we've got seven hundred and fifty bucks, kind of hanging out, or?
Well, we, we, you approved transferring four hundred thousand of that for the Oakland sewer project.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking why it's, it doesn't really show it here, this is just kind of a, I'm just wondering why that, it looks the way it does.
Commissioner Bailey, yes.
Okay, I have a question concerning, don't we, uh, add to each bill each month in terms of amount for?
Excuse me, excuse me, we, we don't need, yeah, we don't need to, we don't need to yell, just thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Don't we, uh, charge, uh, the customer, uh, X number of dollars each month onto the bill for future prepares and things?
Well, we do take ten percent of the bill and put it in those reserve funds automatically. That was a commission decision. I think we charge it, there is a two dollar admin fee.
Yeah, yeah, but that is given, that's separate, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't go up with this, that'd be separate there.
Okay.
If those were not go up, it's only, only your base and your usage will go up. But your ten percent is based off the total deal, so.
Commissioner Bailey, you said you had two questions, but you only answered one of them, did you have to, is there another one?
Oh, I think that, that was covered.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we didn't cut you off.
Thank you.
Okay. If we, if we decided that with the water, knowing that, that that's what we need to do right now, we could, could we hold off on the wastewater for, for one year? What would be, I know what your recommendation is, but.
Based off your current, what, what currently, you could hold, you could hold off on that five percent right now. And we can readdress it come budget time next year. But the water, you definitely need to increase the water. And this can be, this needs to be updated annually. Just because it's showing you a ten year, it still needs to be, we can update this every year.
So we need to update it annually.
Just because it's the same fifteen, fifteen, five, five, five. That can change from year to year through the whole year, it's what might happen.
The other thing to consider is, um, with first and second reading, these new rates won't go into effect until March. So we're being six months into the year already.
Yeah, so you will leave some of this revenue that we're projecting because we're half, only half a fifteen year.
But you know what, I think when we did other water study, that same burden came out that we need to, that we needed to do it, but decided to put it off and didn't do it, so that's why we got in the situation that we are in now. So we really need to make up our mind whether we're going to do it or not do it. Or we keep on kicking the can down the road, it's going to hit us hard.
And we haven't raised these since oh eight, is that correct? When I look back on, that was some of the verbiage that they were using back in twenty nineteen, that the rates have not been increased since oh eight.
Yes, right. Got the hazard number increases? Increases point nineteen, that's the last I had was two thousand eight.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Burton?
Well, we just think that, that they kind of both go together, you know, water and waste management. And we have to just pass it all together, not do one tonight and do one next year. Five percent isn't, um, that large. It's going to really, I don't, I mean, it's always hard to pay more money for things, but actually five percent is not, not too bad.
I have a question about how, how we would structure ordinance.
Okay.
So the city manager's memo and says that we need to increase our rates for the current fiscal year that we're in. And are going to be halfway through by fifteen percent for water and five percent for wastewater. Then, um, there are recommended increases for the years beyond. So do we need to do an ordinance each year? Or do you contemplate an ordinance, um, that essentially has a built-in increase?
I think it could all be done at once, a step up over the years. Can be spelled out in ordinance. Because I mean, if the commission later on decided they didn't want to do that.
Right, I know we can always change it, but I'm just saying, um, since we haven't done this since two thousand eight, what is it going to look like, um, if I make a motion, for example? Do I just say, um, I want a motion to, um, increase our rates according to, um, the recommendations in the study? For how many years?
What I've seen other systems, and I know this sounds right. They'll do like a two-year plan, and then every year afterward, it'll be five percent or the current CPI index.
There you go, that's the word I was trying to say.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah, that, that one. Then you don't have to come back to the drawing board every time you want it to go up a half a cent. Automatically.
Do the CPI.
Yes.
So in your, in your ordinance, like, in your motion, right, you could, you could structure it that way. And that was, I, I believe that was also part of the discussion. And back then, CPI was two to.
Like, two and a half, three percent.
Three percent, and if we had done it back then, but it caught up, it caught up this.
So shall I attempt a motion?
You can, you can, you can attempt it.
I move, um, that we ask, that we direct the city manager and city attorney to bring back an ordinance that will increase our water rates for the current fiscal year by fifteen percent and five percent for wastewater. And for the following fiscal year, which would be twenty-three, twenty-four, water rates again by fifteen percent and wastewater rates by five percent. And in subsequent years, the rate should increase by the CPI for the prior year or the current year? I, I got it, I'll just say the appropriate CPI.
Appropriate CPI.
And.
And it comes out in the spring, isn't it?
Well, the one we use comes out monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah. And I can send you. Um, October is the most updated one, and it was seven point seven percent.
That's the new order, January, then, is that what it is? October, January?
It'd be October one, the new version going into effect each year.
But does, uh, my motion, we would, the ordinance would have to be effective immediately, correct? Right, effectively from adoption.
We have a motion, commissioners, a front of motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Commissioner Bailey's seconded that, do we have any further discussion? Okay, I'm gonna, um, open this up if we have any public comments on this.
Diane Sutcliffe, Orchestra. Um, is this proposed percentage increase, the percentage of the bill at, with, okay, if we add fifteen percent this year, is the next fifteen percent based on that plus the increase? Or fifteen percent of what it is today? That's my first question. And the second question is, as just a, a normal customer, uh, paying the minimum utility bill right now of eighty-two, eighty-one per month, with the increase in the water, the increase in sewer, and the increase in our trash pickup with the new tores, what is the minimum bill going to be, um, in a community that has a lot of citizens that are on a fixed income?
Well, her question was, it'll be fifty percent of new amount in the second year.
Carry forward amount, so it would be fifteen percent of the carry forward amount.
I, I don't have an answer for this.
I think that's gonna, um, that of course would be, Johnson, she's not here. But, um, that would be a question for her, but we can get that for you. Um, we can ask Johnson to get that answer for me.
I'm like, just wait for my work. I reckon just wait for my work, and see what it's going to be.
Hard good to know what's coming.
Thank you, any other public comment? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna quit that.
Lisa Dempsey, three thirty-five Street. I think that's not acceptable, I think we need an answer. I think we need an answer, I'm just saying, I have, I work at the library. I have a lot of people coming in to print out their bills. Um, South Putnam Christian Center, when you're, when you're, when they're, they're getting turned off, they come in the library, I help them print their bills out. They take the bill, they go to South Putnam Christian Center, and they keep their electric on and their water. So, um, this, I'm just saying, because I am dealing with the people that are put upon, the people that are poor, the people that feel this the worst. I think we should know what, what the bill's going to be. Because there's been a lot of increases, and I can't, you know, I can't figure it out just sitting there. I'm just saying, somebody has to speak for the poor, that's what I'm trying to do. And I'm one of the poor, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not ashamed of it. But I, you know, my job is to help the poor. So I think somebody needs to get their calculator out and let us know.
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely get back to, um, Ms. Dempsey, she's at the library.
I just did a quick calculation, it's my recollection that with the tores, and it does concern me that we raise the garbage fee when we have a mandatory raise of the water fee. The tores, I think, if they're nine dollars a month, if that's my memory, that looks like the first year, the water would increase by at least three dollars a month, and the wastewater would increase by at least two, those are the base charges. So it looks like you would have approximately a fourteen dollar increase in your monthly bill. If I'm doing that right, and I agree we should have the exact figures.
I have, I have two dollars and, and, two dollars and ninety-two cents.
Two ninety-two cents, two ninety-two of water and two of five of wastewater.
And two of five, so I think for what we're doing right here.
It was four ninety-seven, four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Four dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Water and sewer combined.
If, now, now we have to be very clear, that's if you use the minimum, base minimum amount. Like, my bill is always twelve, a hundred and twenty-five, it just depends. Um, because you also have gas in there, you have other things, but we.
If you keep your water age below three thousand gallons, that's what.
But so we just have to be careful that we don't put that out there, that this is all that's going to go up is four dollars.
No, that would be the minimum, but I had it in the nine dollars for the garbage because the bill is unified.
Yes.
And what Ms. Dempsey asked, and I think the site's also, was, what is our total bill going to be? We can't really say that, but it looks like a, a minimum thirteen, fourteen dollar increase a month when you count the garbage fee, the water fee, and the wastewater fee. And what I would say about this is, we're directing the staff to prepare an ordinance, and it would come back on first reading in January, correct?
Right, and at that time, they would have that information.
Right, so we would have that information, and as well, if, um, I mean, I do want to say, it's my understanding, and Mr. Red can speak to this, that for, um, major expenses for the water system, we have used, and also for, um, just operational equipment, we have at times used Better Place Plan funds, is that not correct?
For equipment purchases.
Right, but typically we use it for the chlorine thing as well, which was a very significant cost. So we're already drawing from the Better Place Plan Fund for some major expenses for the water system. It is not paying for itself. I'm very cognizant that we have a very low household income around here. And so between now and January, if anybody has any thoughts about what to do about that, that's a good thing to think about.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. So, um, in January, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, be safe, drive on back.
Thank you for the fill-up of the call.
Okay.
Here, the next item is just to schedule a workshop. We did a couple of workshops on maintenance standards. And a couple things, we have a new member of the commission, uh, Crayle to Speed. Also, in, in doing the minutes, Karen rushed my attention that we, through our discussion, we somehow skipped a couple of sections in the standard. So we'll go back and catch those, uh, with another workshop. And keep in mind, we're also later requesting a CRA workshop. And I'm going to recommend that you think about a Better Place Plan workshop as well.
Okay. Are we, are we going to have this, are you looking to have this in December, or can we move into January?
At your, at your pleasure.
Okay.
Uh, yes. So are we going to schedule all the workshops now, or, there are two different places?
Yeah, well, we're not sitting as a CRA board right now.
Yeah, right, so right now, we're looking at doing this for the, um, the maintenance.
Just wanted you to have that in your mind as you look at dates. Currently, we have two workshops on January tenth.
On January tenth, we got two of them.
We have two of them, back to back.
You got that?
I got it. I got you.
Okay, and could we also, I have those on my calendar, but I don't have the topics for them, or?
The final part workshop is rules and procedures for commission meetings. Be followed by traffic calming workshop.
What was that?
Traffic calming.
That's on the tenth. A regular commission meeting is on the twelfth.
Okay, well, I don't have a lot in January, I know I have January the thirty-first. I have, um, I have January the tw- well, it wouldn't matter, but on the twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, I'm not, I'm not available. Yeah, I'm not available, that's a weekend, but I'll let you contact us.
And I'll do the nineteenth of planning the zoning, the twenty-fourth is coming up. And I'll do the nineteenth of planning the zoning, the twenty-fourth is COVID.
What about, um, January seventeenth? It's a Tuesday. How is January seventeenth? Look for.
Four.
Workshop, and then we'll make the hours. What time?
What time?
We used to, um, where they have to.
We've been doing them in the afternoon, those.
Well, I have a question, does the thirty-first work for anyone? Because the seventeenth is the day after Martin Luther King Day, and I'm supposed to be somewhere else on the seventeenth.
When you say the thirty-first, what?
January thirty-first, that's a Tuesday, it's the fifth Tuesday in January.
Okay. That, that works for, I mean, that works for me, that's.
January thirty-third.
You wanna do like two o'clock, or three o'clock, or four o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock?
So, January thirty-first, it's three.
Now, what workshop is that?
This will be the minimum maintenance standards, try to wrap that up.
Okay, I need you to do a motion. Does anybody want to do a motion for this, please?
I move that we conduct a workshop on the minimum maintenance standards on Tuesday, January thirty-first, at three PM.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
Thank you, Mayor, the next item is coming due, giving authority to issue a request for proposals for finance director services. Currently, we're under contract with Clarion, and our most recent representative has left the company, so we were about to meet our sixth representative from Clarion, and it just has not been a satisfactory arrangement. The new representative also does not know our software. So, what I'd like to do is, this firm was not selected through an RFP process, so I'd like to issue an RFP, get firms to bid on taking that over for us, we're plus the date, are familiar with our software, and to see if we can get a better, better combination, we just haven't been happy with this firm. And at the same time, I want to continue to look for a finance director by adding, if you're aware, Palaca, Greenco Springs, Ocala, they're all looking for finance directors. It's really a challenge in the industry. I hope maybe entice someone looking to move up into administration by offering you as an assistant city manager slash finance director. I would train them to be able to take over my position, or move up in the industry, knowing they may only stay with us three or five years, and then take a city manager position, but we would have that experience and get someone who otherwise might not relocate to a small community. So, if we get a finance, if we find someone, we would not go with the firm, and also, we'd go with the firm in case we can't find someone, so we'd have one or the other or not, but. Currently, in this last year, we paid Clarion about eighty-five thousand dollars, a little over that for the year. So, we offered that position at eighty-five thousand dollars for storage, as assistant city manager and finance director. So, I need your authorization to issue the RFP for a finance company. We have a thirty-day out in our contract with.
I was gonna ask you, would you do the RFP, I mean, we would.
We would try to get, the contract ends in March, the end of March, I would try to do it as soon as possible. I'd only put it out there for maybe thirty days, see if we can get some response, and then bring those to you for your, for your selection.
Okay, Mayor, could I have a question there? So, Charles, are you asking us for two RFPs?
Just one.
Just only to hire someone?
Just, no, for the finance services, for a financial company.
Okay.
The other one is just to hire.
Okay, so if you're saying you want to, you want to both look for a full-time employee with the assistant city manager title, and then you want to put out an RFP for a firm?
Correct, and both of them would require your approvals and finalization.
Sure, and I just want to mention before I forget, I went to the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference last week, and I went to a workshop on how small cities get grant funds, and the city of Hawthorne, Commissioner, who's on the panel, mentioned that they use a firm called J and S Accounting that is based in Hawthorne, and they do not have a finance director, they're smaller than we are. But they belong with a pretty mean staff, and I think I appreciate that name, and there was Commissioner Sarantsey. He is a past president of the League of Cities, seems to know what he's doing.
Okay, we have a motion, I have a motion.
Sure, I move that we authorize our city manager to advertise for the position of finance director and assistant city manager with an appropriate salary range, that's not too much money. And as well, we authorize him to issue an RFP for a financial services firm.
One second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Question, was there clarity? Now, that's two, two positions, correct?
Well, we'll have one or the other, if I get a suitable candidate, we won't go after a firm. But we need to go after a firm to let.
But we're putting two of them out there.
Yes.
Hoping to get one.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Actually, Mayor, if I could in my motion, I kinda made a joke, not too much money, but do we need to set a salary range in that motion? I mean, you're gonna have.
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand.
You want, okay.
But I would think you would want that in your motion, and not just not too much, because I picked up on that when you said that.
Yes, well, I realized, I wasn't, I was looking at the memo, and I did.
Amend your motion, will you amend your motion, please?
Yes, so I will amend my motion to take out the words "not too much", but when you say eighty-five thousand, is that the ceiling or the floor, or?
I think I was gonna advertise at eighty-five to ninety thousand, and start at eighty-five thousand. Right now, with our Clarion contract, with the travel expenses so far, we could pay over ninety thousand dollars a year for that service.
Right, but then, one thing to consider is, if we're hiring them, or if we say the salary is eighty-five to ninety, then don't we have significant social security pension and health costs that will actually make that a bigger charge on our budget, even?
I can just say eighty-five thousand is, is the salary.
You might wanna do it seventy-five to eighty-five, you might wanna give yourself a range, I mean. You don't think you could hit anybody for seventy-five, but, or eighty to eighty-five thousand. You have to keep in mind, too, that what we've also been paying is a consulting fee, and that's what, fourteen thousand?
We've been paying Ms. Peacock another fourteen and change last year.
Last year, she got it.
Oh, I know, but we didn't the year before, and we ended the year with.
Ocala's offering seventy-seven thousand as the bottom of their range. Ocala's offering a hundred and seventy thousand dollars at the beginning of their range. Not sure what Greenco was offering.
Okay, well, I guess I'm gonna make my motion, take out the "not too much" money, and put salary range of seventy-five to eighty-five thousand.
Do you feel that that is, um, you're the one that's having to advertise this, you're the one that's been looking at this, so do you feel that if we put, if you put out there seventy-five to eighty-five thousand, that that's going to?
They, they're gonna think we're gonna offer them seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
And my intention was to offer them eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five.
Try to get somebody.
Okay.
I really need somebody I can rely on back there.
I know, I know, dude, this is something that he. So, Commissioner DeVito, do you want to, but you have to, usually you have a range, you have a range.
Yeah.
So.
So, I'm, you know, if somebody wants to amend it, I'm much more comfortable with seventy-five, eighty-five thousand.
So, do you want to, your second, you wanna amend your second?
Yeah, I'll amend my second, I think we should go eighty-five to ninety.
Well, you can't, no, you can't, you're amending your second, you can't amend from your motion.
I'll amend my second.
You have to pull your second.
Okay, I did pull.
Okay, you draw your second. So, do we have a motion, I mean, a second on Commissioner DeVito's motion with a range of seventy-five to eighty-five thousand? Do we have a second on that? Motion fails for lack of second, so now I'm.
Would you like me to amend my motion?
So, if you would like to amend your motion.
Okay, to advertise the position for a range of eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we have a motion, proper motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
No, I'm, we haven't even discussed it totally.
Okay, so do you have a question?
We do.
Okay, does, any more questions, I apologize, I thought we were, had already discussed it.
You know, you just kinda slithered by everything, and went right into negotiating the salary, like it was already a done deal. This is two different things, this is two different things, and I don't think that you can put them all into one sentence. You know, you want approval to issue an RFP for a finance director's service, period. And then you need to do another one to create the assistant city manager slash finance director position to be funded with the funds currently paid to our finance consultant. You, I don't believe that this should be all one sentence. You know, you say, well, well, I'm gonna do this, this way, well, I want you to do it, I wanna know it's gonna be. It's not, I'm, I'm gonna do it, or, or this is what I'm going to do, you're saying that you're gonna do both.
Okay.
Yes, I'm gonna advertise both.
Let her, let her finish, she has the floor, okay, thank you, Commissioner DeVito?
Okay, I think Commissioner Burton has a good point about the creation of a position, however, I don't think we're at that point yet to officially create a position. I think what Charles is asking us to do, and what my motion does, is it allows him to advertise. I think that, and it allows him to advertise for two different things, a financial services firm, and someone to occupy a position, because the availability is tight out there, and you don't know what you're gonna find. I'm not comfortable establishing a position right now, because I still have questions about what our finance department and our positions really need to look like. And I think that's something very important for us to consider.
Okay, but wait, wait, let me just, for clarification purposes, when we advertise for a position, we have in essence created that position, because if he's getting applications for that, he's getting applications for a position.
And we, we have a finance director position, it's unveiled.
Yeah, we have a finance position, exactly.
We have a position.
In, in that time, okay, you get, but all I'm saying is, you just need to separate what you're doing here. But the other thing, it seems like the problem is, is nobody knows Edmonds. So, why are we dealing with a, an old?
It's not, just this firm has their own software that they invented, Clarion has their own.
So, so, so you are gonna be able to guarantee that we're gonna find somebody that knows how to do Edmonds, because right now, that doesn't seem to be the case.
No, I can't guarantee, I guarantee you, we're gonna ask them, that they, that's a, that's a requirement of the RFP. I can't guarantee you we'll get a single response for the RFP, but I need your approval to put it out there.
But to me, that sounds reasonable, I mean, if we have software we're using, and it's widely used, just like Word or something, you want someone of those.
There are other cities in our area that have software, and we reached out to them for a number of times for some help. We need to find a firm, an accounting firm that is familiar, and for a while, we had a lady who was very familiar with it, she left the firm.
And we can't switch over software, we just, what, in twenty, twenty?
Year ago, October, we switched her.
Yeah, and, you know.
Mayor, if I could say something here, it is really concerning to me that Edmonds is not able to have anybody on staff, I mean, not Edmonds, the Clarion Company is not sending us people who know Edmonds, because I went back today and I looked at their original proposal to us, in fact, they did, we hired them initially to do a thirty-day analysis, and they mentioned their proprietary software, but in their first three analysis, and then in their contract, and I don't remember who exactly was on the commission then, but it said very clearly that they would assist us in implementing Edmonds, they expressed no reservation about their ability to do so. You know, and that's just not panning out, but they, they proposed that they would help us implement that system. And as my understanding, that Edmonds is not actually fully implemented yet, is that correct?
Well, no, all aspects of the software.
Right, all the modules.
Modules.
Right, it's, it's taking quite a bit of time.
But all departments are operational with Edmonds, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, well, Commissioner Burton wants to divide and have two motions, is that what I understand? Okay, so, I can withdraw my motion?
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to issue an RFP for a financial services consultant to take the, I guess, to take place in, well, for a financial services consultant.
Okay, we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, no, okay, so moved, we have a second motion.
Sure, I move that we authorize the city manager to advertise for a position of finance director slash assistant city manager for a salary range of eighty-five thousand to ninety thousand dollars handling.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any other discussion?
I have a discussion. Why we put finance city manager in right now, why we get no appetite for the, for the one?
For the finance director slash, I think you want it.
Sure, it's an incentive for someone, because we've advertised for a finance director repeatedly, no results. So, my thought was, we may find a finance director who's experienced, who really wants to move into, into administration, and this is a great step to become an assistant city manager. Knowing they may move on in three to five years, they might take my place, I would groom them to take my place, so it'd be a natural choice, if something happens to me, they, they have a natural choice, I'm ready to just step in and keep going. It's an incentive to get someone experienced to apply.
Mayor, I, Commissioner Burton's asked.
Sure, sir. You know, I look at that as just a way to get an assistant city manager, I think you'll find more people that wanna be an assistant city manager than a finance director, since everybody between Putnam County and all of Florida can't find a financial director. So, I, I'm just a little concerned about plan, how's that? Just concerned about it.
Commissioner DeVito?
Sure, well, I, I share that concern, I was hoping that we could offer a little less money and that the title of assistant finance director would, you know, be like a no-cost attractor for someone. Commissioner Burton doesn't think that's going to happen. You know, maybe it's better, can we advertise for a finance director and just say that there is the potential to be designated as the assistant city manager?
Well, I, I know when I was looking to make the transition, I was looking at assistant city manager jobs, and if it didn't say assistant city manager or city manager, I didn't read the rest. I wasn't looking for another economic development director job, or a community development job. So, to me, it's just a way, it's a hook out there, it's attractive, I won't, I wouldn't recommend someone to you that can't take over the finance department, I need somebody to take over the finance department that is experienced and knowledgeable, and then, the rest of them, they'll learn city management at the same time, and their primary function, their primary responsibility was to run the ship back there.
And I would think that, and that was, that would be my perception, is that, you know, that regardless, if they don't have that finance background.
Yeah, it'll be no secret that their primary thing is to run the finance department.
Then it would be that, is that correct?
I mean, should we amend the motion to advertise for finance director and put it in the job description that they have the potential to be given assistant city manager duties?
I don't think they'll read the job description if they're not gonna move on, yeah.
They're gonna look at.
Rubbish, bait, who can put it out, yeah.
Okay, so, any further discussion, I think we've, we've worked this one enough. So, right now, we have another proper motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All posting, okay, so, okay, so please put on record that Commissioner Burton voted against it, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is consideration of an extension of the lease of city property, we currently, uh, intend to develop title. I remember last year, um, we, they were on a month-to-month release that had, had kind of expired. We renewed them for a year while they would renovate, uh, property they owned sort of across the street. Uh, they were not able to get that renovated this last year and have asked, when I sent this out, I had put a month-to-month. They contacted me after that and said they really wanna extend to the end of December of twenty twenty-three. I believe someone's here to get this.
We came, J.J. Gallett, Gallett IO one seventeen, North Summit. And, yes, just as, um, your manager said, we were not able to get that renovated and, and moved in this year. We had a, a profile with a contractor on another project that ended up in some, uh, charges from the state attorney about denied twenty-second of this year, so. My wife, who's my facility director for everything, has not hired anyone new yet. She does have, you know, this is on a new office, but she does have a team getting ready to come in and start some, some internal demo while she's looking for a new contractor. She just had a test mini project with the new contractor, I think, two weeks ago. So we do have, um, a lot more movement scheduled, or actually movement period scheduled to begin of the year. And that's why I had requested, you know, let's just keep paying rent to the city. Well, definitely should be out way before the end of the year, but I'd rather not be, be rushed in having to, uh, get everything. What, um, what we were up against on moving it was doing a partial build out for what I call public and non-public areas, which we have to secure as non-public areas. So I was wanting to do a build out for public areas and save off non-public. I'd really like to redo it all at the same time, just for ease of the employees in there. They don't want to work around construction noise during the day. So that's really why I was asking, uh, until the end of next year, but if we have any questions, I mean, I am more than happy to hear it.
Wha- what is your business, sir, what is it?
Gallett Title, we do real estate closings.
That's, uh, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Title for homes and?
Homes, commercial, government, institutions, you name it.
So this location is right next to the Parker House, which we have the county office presented by the city?
Yeah, and, I mean, it just, I, I know we've had a change on the guard, but we actually entered into the, uh, into the lease like in two thousand and fourteen. And I think it cost us, let's see, I did bring it this time, like forty-five thousand, three hundred in capital improvements to convert a, an abandoned precinct slash jail that has, was pretty rough. So we know we're leaving all those capital improvements when we do move over to the new office. So the city's gonna have a, a good benefit.
That was just done a couple years ago, huh?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Well, I would make the motion that we approve, um, the lease with Gallett Title that is in our packet, for a period of one year.
And the current rent is right down.
Six hundred dollars a month.
I second, you've been a good tenant.
I have the same thought, they've never caused any trouble.
No.
We look at it as a partnership and we've really enjoyed our partnership with, with Creston City.
Okay, we have a motion and a proper motion and a second, um, discussion? Any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna say, for six hundred bucks, I'm sure that you enjoy it very much. It's a very, very reasonable rent.
It is very reasonable, I mean, when you look at what the initial capital, you know, investment, it's about fifteen, forty-two a month.
Since two thousand and fourteen?
Since two thousand and fourteen, yes, ma'am. So I, I believe it's been advantageous for both parties. And yes, we have been enjoying, uh, like I said, the partnership with the city and, and continue leasing.
All right.
Well, I'll make a comment on the same avenues. In this day and age, the rent, obviously, it's very reasonable. Hasn't been that way, but with, uh, consideration with your improvements that you've done, and it's gonna be the next year. I'm sure the city's rent will be, uh, more for that property the year after, but I would go along with this.
And, and I wouldn't do it. It should be the next tenant, not gonna have that initial capital.
But I've heard all along from everyone, great tenant, so therefore.
And was it a great tenant, or is it the same thing that you just said? It was gonna be more this year? And obviously not, so.
I think my concern is, um, while, thank you, you have been a good tenant. In the meantime, we've had a vacant building on Summit Street.
Yeah.
That is declining in, in its looks, um, for several years now. And that's a concern, that is a concern of mine. And last year, it was supposed to be done this year. And I understand you've run into some construction issues, um, and that's gonna require a general contractor. But, um, I, I don't know next year that I'm gonna, I would hate to see that building continue to deteriorate and, and stay there vacant.
That is my feeling exactly. Uh, uh, you know, facility director, she was wanting to take on another project, I said, at the same time, absolutely not. I need my Creston City office up and running. This is going on way too long, she was, and it's a southbound property.
But we had this, but we had the same conversation a year ago, a year ago. And here we sit and we.
September last year, I still have the notes in my portfolio.
And I just wanna make it clear too, that you, you have the, the building on Summit, but there's also another building.
Behind it.
Behind it, that is in dire straits now. Uh, so, so you've basically got two slum properties there that probably will take a little bit more than forty thousand dollars to fix at this point.
Which is not an issue, well, of course, money's always an issue, but for long-term investments is not an issue as fee ownership or ownership is a lot better investment than a leasehold. So, and we do know that the building behind, I believe that's been dilapidated or.
It is.
For decades, well before us purchasing that, three years ago. You're exactly correct.
And while, and while you're here, I do wanna say that, I don't know if he's doing your yard work there, but they do pile it up because I picked it up now twice, big piles. So I don't know who's doing your yard work, but the, um, waste pro is not picking it up. And the last one had all kinds of garbage and, um, it was pretty, it was pretty disgusting. Martin and I picked it up just before the storm.
I have not heard that.
Okay, so if you could just talk to your yard people to try to keep that, just right there, yes, Commissioner DeVito?
I will find out who it is and.
Oh, thank you.
What's according to?
I know this is an opportune time to raise issues that we have here, but it seems like we're kind of mixing apples and oranges, um, cause we're talking about the lease and it's really kind of a food issue if this building is not up to.
Well.
Um, I'm just saying, can we, uh, call a question on the?
We can, we can. Um, I just, I also wanted to state that we had the same conversation.
That's absolutely true.
So they kind of go, they kind of go together.
This is deja vu.
Because we're allowing this lease, we have a, a building that's gonna still remain vacant and, so.
Well.
So with that, commissioners, if we have no further discussion, we have a proper motion and a second, um, to renew this lease for one more year at the current rate.
Um, I do have one comment. Um, perhaps, given that we are, this is deja vu all over again, our city manager should calendar that we should bring this up in six months and maybe advertise this building for rent, um, next June and see what happens. So I don't know.
I, I have no objection.
Um, I'm, I'm just saying, maybe we should put it on our calendar for the summer and, um, ask how things are going and, you know.
We don't have that in our motion, but we don't need that in our motion, right? Well, let's go forward with our current motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say nay?
Nay.
Thank you very much.
So moved and you've got the Commissioner Burton as a nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you. Mayor, the next item is, uh, for informational purposes only, uh, to link the update on the lease and fire pension funds. Commissioner DeVito requested, uh, a court, and so I included that in the packet.
Okay. Do you have any questions? If there's no questions, then it's my turn. Thank you for providing that. Okay, with this, I think at this point in time, I'm gonna suspend our current meeting and I'll open up our CRA meeting.
Mayor, this first item is, um, a budget adjustment for the CRA budget. So we, you'll be making a recommendation to the city council, city commission to adjust the budget by ordinance at the January meeting. But this is, we had told you over the summer at the workshops that we, we were estimating the amount of leftover money in the funds by the end of the year, so now we have the actual amounts. And as it, it worked out, the, um, central CRA, we need to reduce the budgeted funds, I think it's by about twelve thousand dollars. And then the north CRA, um, I think it was a little bit more. And in the south, it was a little bit more as well. So in your packet are the, the budgets. What's highlighted in the yellow are the amounts of recommending to change. We also recalculated the county share, uh, it went up a little bit. So that's highlighted in yellow, the, the revenue, um. The carryforward has changed, so the totals have changed. And then on the next two pages are the expenses for each fund. The central fund has carved out some money out of the repair and maintenance line and, uh, cut the advertising and marketing down in half and then adjusted some other smaller funds just to make the numbers, the final numbers work. So the big cuts came in, we had forty-five thousand dollars in the repair and maintenance, which we use, we're using to improve, um, you know, doing the brickwork and the, um, sprinkler repair and new trees and those kind of improvements. But that was sort of a fast line. Similarly, in the north and south, the next pages, uh, there were just minor, uh, actual increases. So just put those increases into miscellaneous in the north. And then in the south, um, a little bit in training and education, improvement projects, which is sort of a, a broad area. Adjusted that and then miscellaneous expenses. So it was just figuring out how to shuffle those, uh, odd numbers to make the, uh, make sure all the money, all the revenue numbers were accounted for. So this does not include what we kind of hinted at last month. We wanted to come back and talk about moving money from that, from other areas down to the grants line. As you can see, in central, the, the biggest target would be that repair and maintenance line, if you wanted to move some of that money. My recommendation to you is either do it for specific projects you wanna see done or wait, um, before the year wraps up, we can see like, oh, we didn't use but a fraction of that line. Let's move it into grants and, and get the money out. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Um, is there a question, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm actually looking for the grants line under CRA Central, can someone help me to find that?
It's the last one, grants is grant.
So it's grant?
Singular.
Okay, so, and that's the current fiscal year and that's the one that we, um, are about to spend quite the?
Correct, forty is the budgeted amount, there's not that much left already.
Okay, so I have another question, cause you're saying the ordinance that we bring back is going to, um, adjust both the revenues and the expenditures so that, we have to, right?
Yes.
We have to adjust, um, the, those budgeted expenditures as well. So at the Florida redevelopment association conference, we learned that there are sort of things that we cannot use CRA money for, correct?
Correct.
So, um, and that is, um, advertising and marketing is very restricted, correct? Right, so, um, and you've already taken that down to five thousand?
Yes.
Um, but it was my understanding as well that, um, the festival funding, that would also be restricted? Is that not correct?
Inaugural, down to like inaugural event.
We could do inaugural event, we couldn't give out money for special events and, but we could, um, out of that line, we also pay for, um, materials. So if we wanted to do, um, example I always use is, if we wanted to have a block party, kind of show off an open house of our vacancies and get people on the street to kick off a, a recurring event, we could pay for that and assign age and material necessary for that event to occur. But we couldn't pay for it every month, so it'd have to be self-sustaining.
Right.
Our organization would take it over.
Right, no, I, I remembered that because ten thousand is quite a, quite a bit of money and we are not gonna be spending it for fireworks, probably.
Correct, there are already grants like that.
And again, he's just using the block party as a, just as an example, not that we're having that party.
But, you know, it has a CRA purpose and then we get someone to take it on as a recurring event.
Right, well, I mean, we're already into the next fiscal year, so my question is, um, if we pass this budget with these line items as they are, by ordinance, do, can we move money from one, um, expenditure item to another without an ordinance?
According to, uh, Jody, I said, however you adopt your original ordinance, it's how you adopt the changes. So unfortunately, we would have to go through our first and second reading of the ordinance.
I went through this when we had an interim city manager. We, I was told, and I don't think our city attorney said any different, that unless, that we could move money around within the same fund and with a resolution and that we did not need an ordinance.
And some people have told me that, they always say, but at the end, look at your charter, what does it say in your charter?
Well, I went through all of this.
Yeah.
And I was, um, batted down and told that we did not need an ordinance. So, um, my question about that is, before we adopt this ordinance, um, I'm not really, I don't know, before we adopt this ordinance, should we perhaps think about moving a little more money into grants? Or, um, to me, I think we're very limited in what we can do with other services festivals, that ten thousand dollars is a lot for nine months. And, you know.
We can always move it later.
And we can move it, yeah, we can move it by ordinance. By ordinance.
But that costs money.
And one thing to consider, you know, the advantage of the ordinance we did at the end of the actual, where we, where we adjust the budget to the actuals, when we're gonna second reading one, that is changing the ordinance, the, the budget by ordinance. So we can, Jody talked about, we can take all the changes we made over the year within a fund and pass an ordinance amending the budget.
Okay, so that's a clarification, so we can do a retroactive one of what you're saying?
According to that, yes.
Yeah, no, I, I looked at that, so.
And I'm.
And Mayor, you want to?
Yeah.
Another idea or may not need to?
I, I have a, I have an idea, just a suggestion, of course, can't make a motion, but I'm gonna throw this out there. So I reached out to Allison, um, Allison Payne with, um, Florida League of Cities and she's pretty much the ARPA expert. And, um, as Commissioner DeVito mentioned several meetings ago, that, that things were changed and can use it for economic development, that ARPA's ARPA funds. So in January of this last year, they changed the guidelines and if you're under that ten million dollar mark, you have a tremendous amount more of flexibility than you did prior to that. And so I ran this by her and she, you know, while she can't advise, she said that, um, if, they're looking at anything for revitalization, economic growth, anything that they can do with that. So I talked to Charles and said, with our ARPA money that we have, I know some of it is already truly tied up. Um, but we have how much, three hundred and?
A little over three hundred thousand dollars that we haven't, um, committed to contracts or specific projects.
So about three hundred thousand dollars that are not totally committed to, to these because I would, I would recommend that we look at taking that ARPA money and using a good portion of that for a grant program. And I, I think everybody, we're all, we're all kind of, this is all new to us. This is something that's very new to the community and we're trying to do this as best we can. There's gonna be some hiccups along the way and, and people are gonna get their feelings hurt, but we've got quite a few people, I think, that would be, this would be advantageous to. Um, if we were to do more of a one-time grant program where you would have to come in, you'd have to do your work, you'd have to do the legwork, and we. you'd have to do your work, you'd have to do the legwork, and we could look at all the proposals that people might have, these businesses might have, it would be part of the revitalization. And then I would recommend, in order to do that, though, the CRA is going to have to make a motion to recommend to the commission that they use those ARPA funds, because those are not CRA funds. I also would say that with a portion of that, the biggest complaint we get here continuously is traffic, and us using maybe 100,000 of that to do the traffic calming that we have been looking at doing around town. Either we do it through Grand Wando and redesigning that, but I think that those are two opportunities that we have with that money, and I think it would take care of a lot of the concerns that the citizens have as far as the traffic, and how we're gonna address these, because we know, we know they cost money regardless of what we do, it's gonna cost money. But we also have this grant program that, that possibly this could benefit a lot of, a lot of commercial owners. Now, in order to do that, we would have to set very clear guidelines that we as a CRA have to do, or we don't even have to do it as CRA, would we want to?
The city would do it, yeah.
The city would do it, so we would do it as a commission. It's just something I'm throwing out there as an opportunity that we have, and of course it would mean, this is for the commission, but we do have these funds, and I think this would take care of it, because right now, we've got, we have two applications, and, you know, and I, the, and we only have, what, $40,000 in that, in that grant, that grant fund?
Now we're down to $30,000.
$30,000, so that would help take care of it. Anyway, something I'm throwing in.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Okay. Something, I'm just throwing that out there.
Mayor, if I could follow up on that, since I'm the one that went to the conference and had the conversation and made the discovery that the regulations have changed, one of the key purposes of the ARPA money was revitalization to recover from COVID, the name of it is American Recovery Act.
I understand that.
Right, so in terms of recovery, our business district is hurting, Central Avenue in particular. Those ARPA monies are never coming again, that is a very precious store of money. And my thought, when I first identified this as a possibility for economic development, was that we should look very carefully at what we put that ARPA money into, and make sure that it is for a project that is going to get us a return on investment. In other words, it should be something that would, for example, one purpose of the ARPA money is to bring back a lost business from COVID. The Spray House, which is a central feature of our Central Avenue Business District, has been sitting empty since COVID. One possible purpose that, for the ARPA money, is to actually attract the business to come in there. And there is a local retired restaurateur who might be able to help us find someone. So, I, I think that we need to put some very careful thought and make sure that what we spend that ARPA money on is going to get us a return on investment, because if you look at the revenues from Central Avenue, they continue to be flat, and we are doing facades, we are tempting for termites, but I think we need to see actually attracting an operating business, or actually, you know, try to build something residential. And as well, we haven't gotten into the grant requests yet, but I'd like your idea of doing something better with the grant program, because we, we have problems, you know?
Well, sir, I, I, and I did ask you, when you mentioned that, if you would bring that back, if you would do research and bring it back, and so I...
Do the research on what?
I mean, to, to reach out to whoever you had spoken to with, about the ARPA funds, with what we've had available, and so that's why, this just hit me one evening, and I said, I went to Charles, and so I reached out to Allison, and, because I think that this is part of our revitalization, and, you know, and getting new businesses here, and that's something that, if the Spray House wanted to be part of this program, this one-time, and it's a one-time program, so, you know, it would have to be, we'd have to handle it very carefully. But if they wanted to be part of that, to make it more inviting for a restaurant to come in, or somebody to come in and do the Airbnb, then, you know, that's, they, they would be a good applicant as well, you know, I feel that they could also be an applicant. So, but, to, to invite, I'm, I'm not sure what businesses you're, you're hoping to get in here, because our, our buildings, quite frankly, that's what we've been trying to do, is to make them a little more appealing, so that it would be inviting for them to come in.
We need, okay, that's, that's part of having a CRA manager, I mean, I think we really need to think about what kind of, that was a restaurant, what kind of businesses are going to actually give us a return on investment in our business district, and we need to put some effort to targeting.
I think you're talking about two different things.
We're talking about two different things.
General program, or, like, we have a specific tenant we bring and we grant them versus anybody who wants to fix their commercial property makes application and is competitive across.
Right, so it's just two different things. I threw that out there, of course, as an idea that, that we could take care of two things.
And I, I just have a little stupid question, because I'm feeling in that kind of mood, but, didn't you spend any ARPA money already?
No.
So it's just been sitting there?
No, we, we've committed over half of it. We've signed contracts to design those water projects. There's about $321,000. We haven't signed any contracts or committed it.
Okay, so it's, so, so...
We've talked about sewer to, subject to sewer conversion, but we haven't signed an agreement with it, or designed anything.
Okay, now, all of a sudden, we're talking about spending that to possibly save Spray House, which by the way, I think was empty before COVID.
No, it was not. No, it vacated during COVID.
I think that it was absolutely not.
Water's edge closed a year, about a year and two, not even quite a year and two, it closed and moved back to the moment.
Well, maybe that is a worthy thing, then, I, I thought they had closed it before.
Okay, okay, wait.
I, I really think we should table this and discuss this, or do a workshop on it.
And we can.
I think you're throwing an awful lot of stuff out.
No, I, I know, and that's, you know, but I just wanted us to, to give us something to think about.
Well, this, this as itself is just adjusting the budget to accurately represent the money that's available. If you want to table moving money around, the ARPA funds is actually a city commission issue, you might make a recommendation to the city commission.
And that would be to put it into the CRA?
No, it would stay in commission, it'd be a commission program, wouldn't be restricted by CRA boundaries or any CRA requirements. You put your own requirements on it, it has to have a specific tenant, or whatever your requirements wanted to be, you list those, and anybody who met those requirements, you would award the, the funds they requested, or 50% match, or whatever you decided. But this issue is just, you adopted a budget, it had estimated rollover amounts, now I'm bringing you the actual rollover, and I'm asking you to, to adjust the budget accordingly. This is just a recommendation to the city.
So we need a motion for this?
Yes, we do.
To accept this?
So I'll make, I'll make the motion to accept this, to approve the budget amendment and recommend the city commission for approval by ordinance at the January commission meeting, okay, for the amendments to the CRA budget.
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Is that all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
And Mayor, before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to clarify something about my ARPA research. Really can't see, Jody was so much shorter, Doc. Thank you. It's easier to talk to you if I can see you, and Doc's just taller than Mr. Westwood. Anyway, specifically, what I remember is, I told you that I had a conversation with, actually with Allison's coworker, Wade, I forget his last name. We had a long discussion, I read the Treasury Regulation, because my understanding was that you wanted me to put Charles in touch with Wade, and I did that. So, as far as I knew, I did.
I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying, I didn't say that, yeah, I just would have had him reached out to Allison.
Sure, but, as, I called myself doing what you specifically asked me to.
Okay, thank you.
And I had already done specific research by reading the Treasury Regulations and listening to what other people had done with the funds. So, hopefully I did a little of that, because I typed it.
Okay, thank you. And she did share with me, and I can, I'll send that, I'll have Karen send that one to all the commissioners, the final rule on that, and it gives you the restrictions on usage, so, it's, it's pretty lengthy.
Yes, ma'am.
But, I'll, I'll make sure that you get that, right? Okay. So then we're gonna do, we're gonna set our, the next one is, we're gonna set our CRA workshop date?
Uh, yes.
Okay, then do we want to do that? Do we want to do that on the 31st as well?
Of course.
Four o'clock, five o'clock, I don't know how much we need to come in.
I'm saying immediately after the trade.
Meeting on Sunday?
Oh, yes, CRA, you want to do it immediately following, the minimum maintenance standards on the 31st, January 31st?
Sure. Sounds good to me.
Okay, can somebody make a motion for it, please? Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Charles?
I want to move out here, I wanna, I wanted to kind of recreate, go back to when we started the, this redevelopment grant process. There's a lot of ways you can look at grants and how you're gonna approach it, and many communities have a, a grant where there's just a cap, we had one here, it was $1,500 max, among, sometimes it's a specific match, it's laid out. What I like to look at is, is what are the results? What are you getting? Are, are people fixing the building, are you getting the work done? And I found in many communities, it was very true to New Port Ritchie, we were spending a lot of money, we were writing a lot of checks, and we weren't improving any of the buildings that we all agreed were, were the challenge. And I think that's oftentimes a billing that's maybe inherited, or the owner just doesn't have the money to fix it up, and that's why it's, it's a mess to begin with, and really just drags down the other properties. So, what I want to, I shared with you then, I'll share again, the benefit of our new commissioner, kind of, just a view of grants, the way I look at it, and the way I approached this grant program, to, to really get a better result. So, if you look at any old historic pictures of towns, you see the, the wonderful buildings, some of them are still around, some are gone, many times, people can identify their town in a historic photo, because they recognize the buildings, they always know, like, oh, that's our downtown, like, this one, this is the only one that's actually here, that's the bank building, I'm just painting.
What is all that stuff?
These are other communities around the country. I just took them offline, I Googled historic downtowns, put them on there, and then Crescent City did come up, Hill City Hall there. So, but people recognize, like, oh, that's our downtown, so it really kind of creates a sense of, of those buildings are really just a continuing asset, they represent the town, people recognize them for generations. We couldn't tell you, any of these communities, people often couldn't tell you who owned the building at that time, and it was probably how many owners ago it was, it's just, there was an owner at that time, and they took care of it, or they didn't take care of it. So, I began to look at, at downtowns as, you know, over time, owners come and go, but that, that building hopefully remains a symbol of the downtown, we have some, a few really beautiful buildings left. As a community, the building owners are really, for us, they're a tenant, they're a temporary owner, and sometimes literally, like, the, the building down here with the arches, it's for sale, that guy was very temporary, he wants to sell the building, sometimes a building may remain in a family for, for generations. So, if those are our tenants, those owners are really a tenant or a customer of the city, we, in order to attract a good customer, someone who's gonna take care of our asset as a community, we need to improve and maintain that product, you want, it's easier to keep a, a customer than to attract a new one. So, each building also affects the entire downtown, so if one building is a problem, for whatever reason, it really drags down the rest of, of our, of our downtown, our building stock, of our inventory. And so we can either leave that in the fate of their hands, or we can take it back into our own hands, rather than say, ah, what a shame, didn't take care of the building, we have to tear it down, we've lost it as a community. So that was really sort of the lens through which I was looking at the downtown, and then began to look at what we have left on, on Central, and a little bit of the highway, on 17, what's there, and I had some conceptual drawings done of how we can improve those. This building, we did even the streetscape enhancements, which we're installing now. This building, a lot of people have talked about it, we actually approached, I designed a program where I would go to these property owners and say, if you'll make these improvements, we want to pay for it, we want, we want, and, and in this case, I got a no, I got a very firm no for months, and I just kept at it, like, this, this eventually became a beautiful project. This project, we just recently painted, this is actually a conceptual rendering, but, so it looks very much like that, the actual painting that was done. This is a project we want to do, how do we, this is non-conforming parking, the, the Catherine just mentioned tonight, there was an accident, somebody backed into the highway, currently DOT will not allow you to create something where you have to back into the highway, so what if we made that pedestrian space, a seating area, put a knee wall, some catenary lighting, again, this is our idea, so we go to them and say, we do this. This is another building where we did this drawing of how we can improve it, and meanwhile, they painted it on their own, painted the entire building, made a little improvement to the corner door, but this just shows the potential of that, even that building could be a multi-tenant building with a lot of improvements in there, work to the done. This is, again, the highway, some minor improvements to these buildings, we showed some gathering space, a spot for a food truck, it's hard to read, but that says Crescent City Food Hall, Crescent City Music, just sprucing up that small facade, these are the improvements. This is a beautiful building that's currently being intended to try to stop the, the decay. Now, this shows what that could look like, with a, with an outdoor space, and just painting the facade, fixing the plaster, fixing the trim, painting, preserving those great windows, because that's a real treasure in the downtown. So... Oh, this isn't a touchscreen. So, we targeted building, I targeted buildings that need help, there was a question at last meeting about why wasn't the, the red brick building, Angel Duke's building, it's probably the most beautiful building in town, I wouldn't do a rendering of it, because I'd hate to see anybody cover the brick, it's gorgeous, it's, it's really a signature building in the downtown. So it wasn't on the radar that needs help, the radar was buildings that need to be helped, or they're vacant, they're, they're dragging us down, and so other buildings that are not on there, I didn't put ACE Hardware on there, I didn't put the, the Salon Forum, they both, I think ACE is getting ready to fund some of their own improvements, and Salon is gonna be an applicant, you see in your packet, that's a great building, old historic building. So, my encouragement to you, you know, we can, we can modify the program, we can grant, you know, award grants all over the place in sort of a shotgun blast approach, but my encouragement is to concentrate on Central and, and 17, that, that's the core area, you'll see when we bring in the Land Development Code, we've identified a downtown core, get the work done, it'll be, the, the benefits will kind of overlap each other, be building after building, there will come a point where, where we're, we're kind of caught up, and we're ready to move out and, and do more. I know, I know I'm, I'm prepared to get an application up in the North CRA for, for a facade improvement, and that's great, because there's currently no other applicants, and there's, there's good funding in the CRA in the North. So, that's my encouragement to you, I put in your packet, we had, we have four pending applications, two are in this core, neither one of them were in my renderings, Three Bananas is a signature anchor, they've withdrawn their request to, to paint the siding, they just want to update the, the signs, I put pictures in there, because the signs are peeling off, I think it'd be a great improvement, building. And the other three building, we, we granted Mystic Vistro and the Airbnb previously, in a 50% match, again, they weren't on our radar, because they, they weren't that bad, you know, they weren't really as eyesore, but they did some work, it's an improvement, it's been a tremendous investment in downtown, I'm, I'm looking at the result, the result is great, so I, I recommend approval. The other ones, not bad projects, not wrong, I think, and we could award them, and we'd be done for the year, I think if we were to squeeze them in, but they're, they'd be out, they're, they're for driveways and sidewalk, you know, and just things that aren't, when you drive by, you'll see this big new improvement. So, I think in the future, we'll, we'll do a lot of those kind of projects throughout the CRA, and our funding will increase every year, it goes up a little bit every year. It goes up a little bit every year. I think it'll begin to go up exponentially as we do these other improvements. So that's the point of the grant, it's not, it's not, you know, we're being stingy in who we give money to. It's, it's buildings that are historic, or significant, or dragging us down, or need a lot of work. We think will make the most impact. We're saying to them, if you'll do this, we wanna pay for it. People just still come to us, they're welcome. Anybody can come to us, come to you and ask you for a grant. They can ask you for a hundred percent, they could offer to do a fifty percent match. That's all open, that's all available, and you have applications in your packet, and you can see I put, there's a few more coming. Probably by next month, you'll have, I think, three more ready to come forward. I don't know if the funding will be there. But I'm focusing on buildings that I think will have the greatest impact or the greatest need. When the money's out, either we have an ARCA-funded program, or we wait till next fall, and in October, we'll have either forty thousand or whatever number you wanna put in that line to start another set of projects. And meanwhile, we'll keep doing all the other things we're doing. So that's my recommendation to you. I've recommended painting the signs for Three Bananas, I think that'll have a great impact. Significant anchor in the downtown. Recommending the painting of the, I love the result, beautiful result of the Nature Symphony Building. The other two, I'm recommending Denial, really it's like Not Now kind of approach. You may, you may choose to fund those, it's up to you. And then you're gonna get at least three more. The Salon over here brought in a big ask, and I've asked them to cut that down to something manageable, rather than the whole building, maybe we start with the front. And you're gonna get, we've been working with Palm Arrows on that pedestrian, creating this out front. This is another anchor in the downtown, and this would really create a lively, as people pull in, they see the, they see this beautiful gathering place. It would help expand their capacity, it's good economic development. So that's coming to you, we're still trying to get all the bids in the heat. And then, and I understand Angel Duke's gonna bring a proposal together as well, for this, probably the sign, the trim, and the awnings and so forth. So those are gonna come to you, and, but they're not for each and all.
I haven't opened a public comment, but I will, just let us.
I have a couple of observations about this. Charles, when you proposed this, you sent us an article about value of old buildings, and there's almost nothing I value more besides old buildings. That's why I live in a historic house, that's why I'm on the board of the Fort Mill Peninsular Historical Society, and I worked very hard on it. However, there is something about this grant program that I think is not manageable. You said, what are we getting? It's my observation that the way we've done this, by instead of really advertising comprehensively, and then having people applying batches, we've made a lot of people upset and confused and not happy, and...
How many is a lot of people?
Quite a few, actually.
Yeah, how many would that be?
Well, I would say a significant number of business people in town. And what we're trying to do, I would think, is create some cohesiveness among our business community. So that's a concern that I have about it. The other concern that I have is, is that we really don't have enough money to do everything that we need to do. And so one of the things that I think would make the money go farther, and we're kind of doing it, is to either give this money as a loan, make it be a fifty percent match, and as well, use it as a carrot. There's another technique we could use, and this is for a bigger project, we could give a taxicure rebate. In other words, not give the money upfront, but give it as a rebate. I mean, if you want me to ask people to come and tell you how unhappy they are, I, there's definitely been divisiveness and unhappiness. So, and I just, I'm very concerned that, we wanted to create cooperation and those kind of things in our business district. And as well, it occurred to me, we have some very creative proposals, but some of these, like the beauty salon on the corner of Central and Main, the two-story building, that's one of the large. That one, I don't know, they've done a lot of work. That would almost fall into the realm of a historic preservation grant. I'm wondering, are there some other things that we can do, like identify SBA or FDA loans, for some of these larger projects? I just, I think we need to require a match, I think we need to back the things, and I think we need to be more realistic about how many owners we approach, given how much money we have. And my observation about Palm Arrows is, you guys have great design, but there's some businesses here that I don't think need the money. I mean, I think they can, they can fund their own. So I think we should be very cognizant of that. And the final thing is, we're making downtown look better, but I think another objective needs to be to not only look better, but actually work on attracting a business. And that may be the grant of money, like, for example, the Old City Hall. We've made it look great, but what are our prospects for getting a working business in there? I mean, how, what is the status of that? Because I think the last report was, the owners had decided what to do with it, but it's also not clear that it's tenant-ready, is that right?
We've offered, we're at the grants there for potential tenant, we made that available, we've held an entrepreneur social there. We have been working on getting tenants for the downtown buildings. The challenge is, most buildings are not tenant-ready, and the cost of making them tenant-ready is on us. In addition to opening a new business, you've gotta rebuild out the entire space.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just saying, I think we need to be very careful of how we spend this money. We're showing people what can be done, which I think is wonderful. And that part, I think, is great. We are, we are showing them that we can look good. But the trick is getting businesses here. So, and I, somehow I don't think we've solved that little puzzle.
That's where I came into with my, with my recommendation, or for us to at least consider that. And I, I do believe that as we go forward, and like we said, we're kind of learning, we're, you know, that we do it one time, maybe once a year. And everybody that we advertise it, everybody is aware of it, they have criteria that they have to meet. But before we do that, I do believe we probably, you know, should, maybe, I hate to say the word workshop, because goodness knows, January is full of workshops. But maybe right now, before we go any further, maybe that's something that we need to, maybe we need to do, and look at all the options that we have available to us to go further. Now, at the same time, Three Bananas, I mean, I walked up there, we all walked up there with a secretary, and that is an anchor business in here, and it brings people in. Most of their, a lot of their business is outside of Crescent City. They bring in a lot of people that come to Crescent City, and they spend their money.
An ARCA-funded grant program would relieve the logjam
Yes.
of the applications we're gonna get, CRA. CRA has to spread it over years, that would relieve some of that. But if you, depending on the conditions you put on, I, I think we'll be fine, because Palanca still has a fifty percent match program, and very few, if any, buildings are getting grants. So I think what we, we can do it, I'll do whatever you direct me to do, we'll change their requirements. I think what we'll find is, our applications will drop, drop, possibly to zero.
Well, because a lot of this requires a fund.
Well, I have a res, a possible solution for that, is I'm in the mindset that I don't want to say to fund for somebody to refurb their business and then sell it for profit, instead of getting anything. If I was gonna do that, I'd buy four or five buildings downtown, come to you guys, get the money, two years later, I sell them. You guys just paid for the refurbishment. I don't believe that's the answer. I do believe that a fifty-fifty, somebody has to have something invested in it. If you want something, you're gonna put up something. I do believe that a business should, the CRA, have some kind of walk-in, think, not a warehouse, but a boutique restaurant, something where it benefits the public, not just one person. I also believe that the CRA grant was meant as a helping hand. I believe that we could offer them, if they don't have the money, which is a lot of the problem, is the buildings downtown, people can't afford to do that. All right, then let's do this. When you sell the building, you pay back fifty percent, or we'll stay the payments for four or five years to give you a chance to get up. But you're not gonna get a free ride a hundred percent and sell the building for a profit. That's just, in my opinion, not fair. I do believe we could have fundings and advertisement for empty buildings, for people to come in for a job fair, business fair type thing. But I believe that that's not the CRA's purpose. And I do think everybody should have a thing, but I also think there should be a cap. Nobody should get eighty thousand dollars, you know, one person and a bunch of the other buildings need seven, like the, like the Three Bananas or what have you. And I believe that's put too much of the funds in one spot. If you wanna make this a beautiful thing, to do this, to do that, to bring things down, Three Bananas, you're gonna have to share the wealth a little bit, it's just a matter of budget. So we say, hey, guess what? No one can get over twenty grand. Everybody has to put up fifty percent, whether we defer it or not, and go from that. We want a beautiful, everybody who wants to put an application can. And of course, if we're gonna run out of money October first, he who hasn't should move up on the top of the list, who hasn't done that, that year. So gee, we're sorry we can't do it this year, but guess what, it's on top of the list of the next, and go down. I think we can make it more fair. I do think there's some people that are upset, but I'm also with the mindset is, it's a learning process, it's spilt note, we let dead dogs lie, and we go on to the next thing without dragging up ill feelings in the debt. We can't do a thing about what it's done, it's over. What we can do is make it easier for the businesses to apply, and make it easier for the businesses to get some funding, as long as they're in the areas. And yeah, if we have to defer that fifty percent, because it can't afford it. But I have a real problem with somebody who owns three businesses, who paid money for them, and goes, oh, I can't afford to keep them up. We can't screen buyers, but yet we want to make sure that the buildings are ready for future generations. I think there's where the rub lies, is, hey, if you can afford to buy four buildings, you better be able to afford to keep it up. If you buy one, and it's rundown, you can't afford it, because it's a building, historical downtown, that we could possibly bring a business in, those are the folks in need of it. Don't bring me anything under fifty percent, I'm gonna vote no. Having people getting the ability to help themselves, I believe, is what the CRA is for. Not for a real estate investor, this is your, buy properties to get your things fixed up for nothing. Like two cents, you take it for what it's worth.
And I think that's where possibly, if we were to workshop and look at all of our options. I mean, we did a defer, defer fifty percent, like you recommended. I don't know if anybody's actually buying up a lot of properties right now and doing that, but that would be a concern if they were doing that to benefit off of this.
I could see somebody with the idea of doing it, for what we're doing, I really can. But I do think we need to vote on tonight, Three Bananas is the second, third time with it. There's some of these things we can't award, let's not make them wait. We wanna get this stuff on the road, let's do this, and the rest of them, we can move on with.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes.
I mean, we have several applications in here, and some of these people have done the work that's very needed, with the idea that we would fund them, so, I mean, can we just take them one by one?
You can take them one by one.
And go through them?
Just do that.
Hey, Charles, you wanna start with it?
All right, the first one's Eleven South Lake Street, this is Three Bananas. They withdrew their request to paint the building, and submitted to redo the signs. The higher bid is higher because it includes reinstalling the signs, the lower bid includes that, so we're recommending CNC vinyl signs.
Okay. Well, I have a question about that. So does Three, does Three Bananas indicate a preference? Do they need them installed, or is that something they can do themselves?
I, I don't know, did you?
Like, they could, they...
Hey, you clearly can't move the sign and remodel the stuff for themselves.
Yeah, they, they can't do it themselves, that's probably...
That's all I want to know. Okay, so I moved that we have approved CNC vinyl signs for Three Bananas, for the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? And Mr. Watson, I have not forgotten about you.
Okay, go, go, go.
Okay, I have forgotten about him. There's no other discussion at this time, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one is one twenty-four Central Avenue. This is, apparently has two tenants, Nature Symphony Body, Soul, and Fault Room Engineering. The building was painted, it's a two-story structure with a two-story porch. Cost of the painting is twenty-eight thousand dollars, the applicants requesting a fifty percent reimbursement, fourteen thousand dollars.
Any other information, they follow the rules, they do everything to put in the paperwork?
No, this one, this is actually a second grant application. And the previous one was for Mystic Bistro and the Airbnb, it was a reimbursement, they'd already done the work. They didn't, they weren't able, they were able to provide us with a few bids. So we said for the, for the third building, we need multiple bids. They did not provide those prior to the work, and they did the work, and then provided us with the cost of it afterwards. So despite our urging, did follow the proper procedure.
I was like, Bert, did you, I'm sorry, I thought you said... Yeah, I would like to speak to that. It's my understanding, I mean, this is a beautiful building, it's a contributing structure to the historic district. And I think Lorian tried to discuss this with Christina. It was a very complicated project, it's all wood, it required scraping, and they couldn't find anybody else who wanted to do that particular work. So it's my understanding that they were not able to get bids. And these people are basically busting a gut to operate two very active businesses on Central Avenue. They're, they're just doing fabulous stuff. They have a retail location, and they have a restaurant, and they have an Airbnb. And they've made quite an investment of time and money. And, you know, I'm not sure that it's highly profitable at this point. And I think anything that we can do to help boost them and support them in their efforts would be very positive for Central Avenue. I would hate to see it disappear.
Is this building for sale?
No.
No.
Not yet.
She's got it stored.
That's telling me that it is, it's telling me it's for sale?
I don't think so, that was a wise, wise thing.
They just, they just purchased it.
Yeah, they just purchased it and remodeled, and remodeled all, all three buildings, all three, yeah.
You know, I certainly think Doc had a very good idea of, but isn't this in our grant program already, Charles? Not getting that right, if they sell it in a certain amount of time, don't they have to pay it back?
No, if they were to paint over it, undo whatever we paid for, they would have to pay us back, it's a five-year payback provision.
I, I don't think we can scrape the paint off the wood, or that would, that's not gonna apply in this situation. But certainly if they, if they sell it, I think it's a great idea to ask for the fourteen thousand dollars to be reimbursed if they sell it within five years. We should get that money back.
We can add that to the, to the requirements.
I, I think that's a great idea.
I think my problem is, you know, Three Bananas just put in a, to get their place painted, for about fourteen thousand dollars. So why was this one twenty-eight thousand? Twenty-eight thousand just seems very, very expensive.
It's got porches upstairs and down with railings all the way around it.
It's larger, it had all the...
It's a very different building. And it had... And it had to be, I think that um, well, for one thing, it's my understanding that Three Bananas doesn't want, or you were going to the cost, that they have other plans and they don't want to have it painted right now. Um, but yes, I think it is a more extensive, I think it's more area of paint and more area of scraping.
Well, but, but we don't know that, maybe if we had a proper bid, we would know what that was all about. And we didn't have a proper bid, there was no, no bids taken on the house, no measurements, no nothing, um, no, nothing. Um, I think it's a beautiful building, I've been in it, I've shopped there, I've bought things, they've done a wonderful job. I agree with all that, but they didn't really seem to follow procedure, they didn't follow procedure on the first two buildings. I believe, uh, I, I, now I might be wrong, but I, I think they just did it and then came in and asked for fifty percent on those as well. So, I, I'm not sure what... There's two, there's two heads on this, you know, there's one that says, oh, the, the building's beautiful and I think we, they did such a nice job, we should pay for half of it. Well, you know, I don't know a lot of people that paint their houses and take care of them and everything and, and would love to come in here and put their hand out and say, gee, could, could you pay for half of this because now my house is beautiful? But it, it, then there's the other guy that says that they should have come in with some bids, we were supposed to be involved with, with, with the process. And we kind of weren't, and I think that's the only thing that I'm upset with.
Can we put in there, can we, we can put the condition, we can add the condition on there that if they were to sell this, that this would be considered reimbursed back to the?
We could, we did with the termine that he had to agree and seller, a buyer had to agree to renew that every year or they pay back the cost.
Those two pay back the cost of it.
And so these folks have three other properties here in town?
They have, on each side. See, no side, no side conversation, I'm showing him. That building, is there Airbnb? This is the Mystic Bistro, that's the one that sits in the middle.
They purchased it as one, from one other, from one, for, as one piece of property.
And then get this from Patrick Kennedy and from our brother?
Not all three, they did, they purchased, so they purchased the house on the end, the Airbnb, they purchased that separately and then from the way it looks, it's that they purchased the Mystic Bistro and the big house as one, as one property.
But, but they were all Patrick Kennedy.
Yeah, they were all Patrick Kennedys from the same owner.
The, the positive outcome of all this is, um, the building that's now the Airbnb, um, when Patrick Kennedy buys an old building and he's still got one across the street, he works on it very deliberatively. I think that the building that's now the Airbnb was probably under construction for a good two years, if not more.
Probably four or five.
I, I mean, I lost track, it's now being put to a productive use, which they, none of these buildings were being used for commercial purposes and they now are. And if I can think of any reason why, um, the owners did not fully comply with all the paperwork and Dr. Eisenfroster teaches, is because they are busting a gut to operate these businesses.
Okay, do you, Christina?
I have a problem, I, I'll just be frank. I have a problem with all of these properties, they painted this already, they're gonna use them for commercial purposes, they're making money right now, Mystic Bistro's open, uh, and you can say, nah, maybe they're not, maybe they are, but they invested their money into this stuff, they've already painted it. I have the same problem with Commissioner Burton does, they didn't follow the rules, but yet they have enough money to buy three pieces of property that's over a million dollars and you're gonna tell me that they can't afford fourteen thousand dollars, uh, in their own property to keep it up paying? I, I kind of have a problem with, uh, every, once again, here, here's somebody that obviously has the money or they couldn't afford the property. I think the money would be better suited to somebody or some other place that is having more financial difficulties rather than paying for three properties and hoping that they go. I think Mr. Bistro is gonna go, I think this thing is, uh, gonna do it, but I'm not sure that if, if they had followed by the letter and gotten it okay to begin with, we'd have the funds, this is fourteen grand, it's probably gonna wipe out the CRA for the rest of the year on one property.
We have sixty-two fifty left.
Sixty-two fifty. So if we do this and you got sixty-two hundred dollars. That, that seems like it's gonna drain the kitty.
That's why I said, that's why I tried to come in with a recommendation that maybe we table the rest of these for right now until we can, can work something out because this will drain. Um, we got, we got the salon on the next one, I mean, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I get my hair done there and it's, 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 it's tough to get out, I mean, I understand what she's talking about, you know, she has a lot of elderly clientele there, um, and, and so this will only enhance her business and so it's gonna be hard to tell her no because we've run out of, because we've run out of, run out of funds. Um, she's taken the painting off of that too, I mean, not that I'm advocating for it, I'm just saying that, you know, with each one of these, we can see how it would be beneficial. So I think that we, would be my recommendation to, to you that maybe we table this and we, we visit how we can ramp up this program a little bit.
I think Christina seems to want to say something.
Well, I just wanted to address, um, with Ms. Hoffner, the fact that, um, I did ask her to get a couple of estimates, she was having a hard time, but she did express to me that she wanted to use the same painter that she used on her other buildings because he was dependable and worked on historic buildings, so it was her preference to use the same painter and, um, she wasn't able to acquire any additional inked bits.
Okay, well, how come they didn't supply the painter's bid before he got started to get to the same one?
Now, that's a better question for her. Okay, we have, before we go any further, um, I've got, we need to take some public comment, so, Mr. Watson?
Thank you.
Everybody have a thought tonight? Gerald Watson, four oh four Lake Street, this is interesting because it's a real good conversation, dialogue going around. One of the things that's real clear is this, this question of precedent. And I, I, it, it, it hits me because, you know, the last meeting when there was this discussion about the, the, um, the, the, um, the gospel event and, and, and charged them a fifty-dollar fee. And if, we, we have to be careful, Commissioner, that was your recommendation, uh, because of the precedent that it would establish. Now, fast forward, we have all kinds of, we're drowning in issues of precedent. I mean, Scott, Scott's, oh, hey, Scott's my man. But were, did all these kinds of discussions take place when we wrote a check for forty thousand dollars about precedent and this, that and the other? Um, I mean, it's, we have to be careful, okay, about how we do going forward based on what we've done in the past and I realize we're working through it. Maybe it means someone made the suggestion of the new money, the three hundred not being part of CRA shifting it, because then you can have a new program where you can establish new guidelines that, that, and criteria, okay, that everyone can be on the same page from the beginning and it be, it be advertised openly and publicly, so everyone's got a shout at the gate to apply. I mean, one of the things that's clear is that, is that, and I think someone here said it, uh, is that while on the one hand, we're looking to make buildings look better, uh, but at the end of the day, to what end, right? We're looking to attract new, new, new businesses to the area. And one of the things to think about is there's ways to do that. I mean, certainly saying, look, here's a check, uh, to help you fix your place up, but we, we, but think about some, a, a, a strategy, targeting some, some target businesses that we want to attract that would fit. Uh, you, you know, we're looking at doing some great things and I think that screech tape looks nice for, for Paul Maris, but then a couple doors down past the pawn shop, we got a big, big old empty space there with a big question mark, there's all kinds of things that can be used for. Well, there are, there are people who are not in business or people who have businesses outside of our area who can potentially come in, come in and start a business, right? If they know that this is the package of benefits that we can offer, right? In addition to just space. And we, we, and we gotta be careful, at least about again, making sure it's an even playing field, because you can't tell one guy, here's a check, and tell another guy, here's, here, here's a loan. So, I mean, the other point about, about the, 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 uh, the.
I'm sorry.
Am I, am I done? Okay.
Gerald, you're animated, you're animated, so we're gonna, we're gonna work on these three minutes.
Hey, listen, no problem.
You've got a lot to say, we appreciate that.
I think we got some good points across.
Thank you.
Got one in, there you go.
Thank you.
Diane Sykes, three oh four Chestnut, guess that was, uh, what Gerald was saying, that was gonna be, my question, do we have a documented grant process and application or, or are we just making it up on the fly for each person who comes on?
We have a grant application kind of process.
And we have a process that everybody knows what it is, it's online?
I don't think it's online.
Okay, how, that people find out about it, they have to?
I, I approach people and say, we've got an idea for your building. This is a targeted redevelopment grant program.
Does everybody get approached or just certain people?
As, as I showed in the presentation, the targeted buildings, we think are in desperate need or dragging the downtown down, we approach them with renderings and make recommendations. Meanwhile, other people apply to us, hey, I'd like to do my, I heard there's a grant, I'd like to paint my building, I'd like to paint my driveway. So both things are occurring.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just, or could you state your name and your address?
Yes, my name, Colonel Hank Carrico, five twelve Lemon Avenue, had two pound net tours and this is my first meeting ever. And I just want to say, uh, big thank you to each and every one of you for your public service and, uh, and I just hope that the town would, uh, you know, I moved here twenty years ago because it, to me, it was an idyllic piece of America, someplace to retire and be comfortable and the parades and the decorations, not whether they're white or the color or they have, whatever they have, it's beautiful. It's beautiful before, it's beautiful now. But, uh, I just wanted, uh, just to remind everybody that, um, regardless of, um, culture, faith, politics, uh, we still have the commandment to love each other, but love thy neighbor as thyself and let's get along and let's keep working this great job. Thank you so much for everything you do and we're just gonna go. All these great businesses that are coming and spreading are new, city management, everything's looking good going forward and it is beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Nice to hear that.
I love you too, babe.
I just get that every once in a while, every once in a while, we don't get that, we don't get that a whole lot. Okay, so Commissioners, right now, we've got, um, we're kind of at a crossroads, we've gotta figure out what we're gonna do, so.
Well, look, are there any other of these with Lasso that we could do two or three of them to, before we do the empty the kitty or, uh, are we just gonna stop at this? If there was more to look at, then less money.
Well, I just, I think we, we really do have to define how we're going to move forward right now, because I, I think we have a lot of good, um, ideas. Yeah, I, I think Commissioner DeVito, Commissioner Bailey have a lot of good ideas and we just need to sit down and, and, and put them together and see how we can benefit the city with the money, so I'd like to table this, I'd like to make a motion to table this, uh, to, um, make a motion to do a workshop and, um, move forward that way.
I would like to see us do a workshop that would define what we need to do first before we do anything else. Take the workshop, put up the rules everybody needs to know, it would start with a level playing field, I think she's exactly right.
Do you want to add it to the currently scheduled workshop or schedule another CRA workshop?
Well, I think this is gonna take a while, I mean, this, I think everybody should write down some ideas and stuff, till we go to the workshop, it's not, it's not, you know, spitball.
So we have, we have a motion to table these, do we have a second?
I said.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, we have a public comment, that Alice, would you, Ms. McCoy? Apologize, you know, it's hard when you're up here and you know people by their first name, you have to be so formal.
Um, Alice, Athens McCoy, uh, three fifteen North Summit Street. The application is online, I printed it out and filled it out and followed all the rules, read very carefully what the requirements were, um, whether or not it would help, um, generate business, bring businesses to town, all of these things were in that application. I very carefully got three bids, I very carefully scanned everything in and emailed it in, I think you, you did have it. I'm just saying that there, there are requirements, it isn't helter-skelter, it may have been right in the beginning because it wasn't defined what exactly the goal was, but I'm just saying the people that did follow exactly what the application asked for, I think they should be given some consideration.
I do, well, what property were you talking about on yours?
It's three fifteen North Summit Street, it's on the corner of, um, seventeen and Summit Street.
With the florist's.
And, uh, right across the street.
Oh, the florist.
Yeah, the florist.
Okay, and I think that, um, in our packet, the two pictures are mislabeled. The one that says three fifteen North Summit is really three eleven, that's, um, Randall Wood U Salon, um, and then the one on the next page that's blue, that's actually three fifteen that belongs.
Yeah, picture follows the description.
To Mrs. McCoy.
Yeah, see with it, as you said right there.
I set mine in electronically.
Right.
So I'm not sure what might have happened, you know, after that, but.
Well, I think it's.
Oh, one of the pictures I think showed the, I was trying to show the condition of the parking lot and it may have shown three eleven and, you know, and.
No, it's right, it's just it, it stops, the picture comes behind this.
Oh, I see.
And so the picture was too large to be on here, so it, it went over to the next page, jumped to the next page and then it started three fifteen and then your picture was immediately following that.
Anyway, I've been, I, I've abandoned this property two years, January the sixth, and have not been able to finish my building and open everything up, my business up, because of all requirements, not necessarily the city, of the county zoning, of all the requirements from insurance companies to totally bust up my slab and put new drains in and everything that, um, you know, was a lot more expenditure than I originally thought, but I do think that it would be much help because mine's one of the places seen when you come, come through town.
Where are they? Where are they? Don't get covered.
Real self-employed in person.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and this one, on this, on hers, um, on Ms. McCoy's, what exactly does this, does this entail, um, for the construction?
I don't need a new parking lot, I just need refurbished what is there.
Seal coat, driveway and restryke, paint and tire building, pressure wash and caulk.
That's just, we don't want to do that.
Okay, right now, we have, so right now, we have a, um, we have a motion, we have a motion on the table and a second to table these until we can have further discussion. I think if we were to do that, we might want to amend the motion, um, just my recommendation to make sure that, that we recognize that they have already done and followed what the requirements or what we had asked of them.
Well, it's not really a, a meeting, it's actually a workshop.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we do recognize that you've done that just from this meeting, um, and then we will come, we will come back to that once we define how we want to move forward.
So with that, Commissioners, um, at this time, I'd like us to go ahead and, and take care of this.
Are we table a two-day ceremony?
Taking this motion.
Or do it till the workshop?
Till the workshop, you didn't set the date for the workshop, do you want to put that in the motion?
Yeah, what's a good date for anybody though? I, I haven't had a chance to even ask that, uh.
Thirty-first.
I think it's good, where do you?
We've got already two, we already have thirty, we already have two, one on the thirty-first.
Yeah, one day and get three down.
We have January tenth, we have two on January tenth.
We do, which one, which one?
We see just for meetings and immediate recall and traffic comment.
We have January seventeen.
No, I really do not have January seventeen. But my suggestion would be that we defer the minimum maintenance workshop and put the two CRA workshops together. Put that on the thirty first.
Okay, and then defer the, um, minimum maintenance to where?
Well, actually, are we ready to do minimum maintenance workshop, do we have any appetite to do that before?
The minimum maintenance is just, we have, there was a few things that got, that were left out.
It's, I think, two sections.
Yeah, two sections that were left out, so it shouldn't be, it really shouldn't be that long, and it's just kind of bringing, um, the new commissioner up to speed on it.
Let's do more one day. We got a day for the...
Okay, so, yeah, so if you're thinking that's gonna take long...
So, we'll do it, um...
Fold it into the existing CRA workshop on the thirty first?
I think so.
Add it to the agenda.
Or not, save the day.
Could you amend the relation to speak to that?
It'll be a long day, but I'll take it.
So we will have a, um, what do we call it again, the grant?
Grant workshop.
Grant workshop, uh, on the thirty first of January, immediately, um, okay, whatever time you want it.
Immediately.
The current, yeah, the current CRA workshop begins immediately following the minimum maintenance workshop.
So immediately following the CRA?
Or as part of the CRA workshop.
Oh, yeah.
Two CRA.
As part of the CRA workshop.
Just add to the agenda.
We'll just do it all, yeah, okay.
Just do it all, okay.
I'll second that.
We already have.
We already got a second.
You already have a second, okay, you're good with that, then you're good, yeah?
I go with it.
Okay, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Okay, so, ma'am.
Mayor, are we, well... Are we at the end of the CRA agenda?
We are, and so I'm looking at my agenda now, so I can close us out, so I'm gonna close us, the CRA out, and, uh, open up our general...
Right, I was gonna ask, could we take a five minute break before we go back to our regular meeting? We only have the city manager.
We're on the home stretch.
Yeah, we're on the home stretch, we're...
I'm aware of that.
Do you need to...
Yeah, I need a five minute break if you don't mind.
Okay, I'm gonna do a five minute recess. And everybody be back soon, and...
That's good, Ellen.
That can go down. And so, this is a normal operation that we need to do. Right now, Jason can't leave, can't be away, be very far away. So, we need to get this done. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and we need to make this purchase. The other system we found, this is a local company, do a lot of work in Clay County. The other firm was out of Texas, would be doing things remotely and was quite a bit more money. So, I just want to let you know and answer any questions you might have. I had Keith stay late with us, in case you have questions about what's going on, why we need this.
That's something we need.
Yeah.
It's very important.
How soon?
We've been struggling with this to find a solution and we finally found a solution.
How soon?
It's been a month now.
Yeah.
This has been going on.
At least since before the first storm.
Before the hurricane.
Before the hurricane.
You see that down there constantly.
Is there a backup generator or something in case the electric goes out and it still works?
Yes, there is. Is there a gas power generator down there?
Natural gas.
Natural gas.
The generator is natural gas. And we are looking into changing that one out. It is a new generator, but when they quoted us on it, it, because it's natural gas and it's 150 KW, it won't, it'll run the plant, but it won't start on its own. But this is, we don't need to talk about this now. The radio system, because his is down now, he has to, there for a while, he was coming in every three hours, 24 hours a day. He's been doing this for months because it's, we were trying to get ahold of the company in Texas. They now informed us that they don't serve the software for that one.
The only version, right?
Yeah, they just really, they didn't really give us a quote, a rough estimate of $30,000 for them. And this guy does everything in Clay County, the jail, I think the prison, all that, and everything is done by radio. We'll need one phone line and the only reason why that phone line is for if something happens at the plant, it will dial Jason, or me, or Ronnie. And that's one reason why it's costing so much money.
So, this will be on a repeater system like a business bank?
More or less, yes.
If those out and then it'll automatically dial in case it goes down?
I want to say 800 megahertz.
100 megahertz.
Yeah, I want to say 800 megahertz. So, and, you know, and then later on, we can look into the future to add enlist stations to that, that particular system. Which will make it nice because we've had some problems in the past, but we won't go there.
How soon can he get this installed so that Jason?
Soon as I get him the PO and he gets this stuff ordered.
And have him live again.
Yeah.
Because he can't even go on vacation. He can't leave town, can't do anything.
Because as of right now, with us sitting here talking, if something was to happen at the plant, the only way we'll know it is when somebody calls in and says we're out of work.
And you're going to mean, tell me this is our best option? That's good enough for me.
Thank you.
People worry about the lift station, we need something like that. We're on Bay Creek there, that thing, that really like to break down quite a bit.
Well, luckily, we got that fixed. Yeah, we got new panel box, but we are applying for a grant. We should know something, hopefully pretty soon on that, to get a generator put there.
That's part of the CDVG grant?
Yeah, and then later on, we can look into that and add the radio system to certain lift stations. We don't have to put it on every one. There's just like five major ones we really need it on.
Right.
So.
I'm making a motion, we buy this as written for the radio system and implemented a meter.
Sure.
Motion, is that going to be further discussion? Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Another thing I wanted to let you know, last fiscal year, you approved a pole bar purchase, which we had to order. We knew it would take months to come in. It has come in. The kit is stacked up out of the garage, so I'm going to bring that back to you. I need to bring it on the 21st or in January to actually, um, to erect it, for the concrete base and erect the pole bar. Also, I was notified today that the multi-year lease of the county of our building down there is expiring again to this month. So, I'll bring you at the 21st special meeting, a renewal of the county's lease. Uh, that's, I think, a two-year, two-year, two or three-year lease.
No, the county office.
The county office, yeah.
That's the last.
Charles, it's a two-year.
It's a two-year lease, so I'll bring that, want to get that renewed before the end of, expires the end of this month. I also want to let you know, I'll be out of town, leaving Thursday afternoon, Thursday night, through, come back next Wednesday night. My brother-in-law is visiting from New Orleans, he want, or from Brazil, and he just wanted to see New Orleans. So, we're going to go to New Orleans and for the weekend camp and, and, but I will be available by email and text and phone.
Right, but what are the dates of that?
That's, um, the 9th through the 14th. David Frank is my assistant administrative supervisor, so he can be available as well.
Well, deserve time off, get out of town. Now, when you're in New Orleans, I'm sure they've got weeds and things in New Orleans. Resist.
I'll notice, yeah.
Resist, resist. Okay, so are there any other questions, Mr. Redd from his report?
Um, yes, I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, um, Charles's report mentions that the draft audit has been submitted to the city for review.
It has not. It went to Jody. And I got to ask her to give me a copy.
Okay, well, this is something of great concern because, to my understanding, I did some research, we were told at the last meeting that the due date was December. The due date is actually June 30th. And you all have, the mayor's already received it by certified mail, um, and Charles by email back at the early part of November, you all should have received a letter, a copy rather, of the letter that the mayor and Charles received. We are delinquent according to the Florida Legislature of Legislative Auditing Committee. And, oh, we need some clarification here. Um, at the last meeting, Bobby Pickens said, oh, the audit's not due till December.
That's not.
Well, that's what I heard you say. Doc asked, when is the audit due? And you said December.
I did not say that.
Well, it sounded like it.
If you look in the letter, you have, it says December 19th.
Okay, but actually, what the letter says is, um, "To avoid having state revenues withheld from your municipality, please submit the above referenced reports," that's the annual financial report that's supposed to be filed online, and the audit report, um, "to the Department of Financial Services and the Audit General as applicable, no later than December 19th, 2022. If such reports cannot be submitted by the state, please provide a detailed status of the delinquent financial reports, including an estimated timeframe for report submission."
Okay, commission will be done?
What is the status of all this?
What are you trying to get at? I mean, what are we trying to get at? So, that's what I want to know, because in your tone and the way you're projecting is that it's more of an accusatory, which is concerning, because nobody, nobody in Charles's office, the finance department, nobody is trying to hold information back.
Okay.
Um, I spoke to Mr. Bose, because actually, if we have to testify, guess who has to testify?
I know, okay, mayor, could I finish my question?
Please finish, but I'm just saying that your tone was more of an accusatory, and so I just want to be clear that nobody's trying to misrepresent anything, so.
Okay, forward. Um, I'm not saying anyone's trying to misrepresent anything, but number one, um, the entire commission should have been made aware that this letter came out and that this was the status of it. I've been asking where's the audit report and what is the status? The status says that it's overdue. So, they've given us a timetable here. How are we going to meet that timetable?
We're going to provide the auditors with the information they're requesting, and then they'll finish the audit.
Okay, but the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee has said that they need to hear from us no later than December 19th of this month, and that if we can't submit the required reports, we have to give them that they are calling delinquent, that we have to give them an update.
Yes.
So, what, how are we going to do that? Because.
Probably by email. We'll tell them, this is the reason, whatever's left. We have about, I think, three or four items. I'm working with the Clarion to finish those up. And I, all of you got a detailed explanation from the auditors of why this is like. It's not the auditors. It's that we, we're on, we'll be going on our sixth representative from a Clarion. Multiple employees going through here, just every time someone new comes on, they start over. They don't know the history. I don't know the history of that prior, not last budget, the year before that, when Mr. Esposito was here. So, we don't know the history and, so we're doing what we can to get the information. They sample different things. I need the backup on this, I need this. And so, Jill's new, she's digging around, trying to find the paper, everything's paper, trying to find the paper copies, trying to give them what they need so they can complete the audit. And so, even now, there's some utility billing information they need. We're, it's from IMS, which we don't have anymore, it's the software. So, we may have to just take an audit finding on that, but we're going to straighten that out, which we've already done. We have new software, but we'll have to just have that finding on our audit report. So, we will, we will either have it all to them by the 19th, or we'll have information from the state as to what's left, and we'll be in compliance. The mayor spoke with the state, he said, just be in communication. Let us know your status. There's how many?
Over 100, over 100 municipalities that they've sent the same letter to.
In the same letter, getting the same letter.
And a handful of counties that they've sent this to. And Mr. Bose said that as long as we're communicating with her, she said, the last thing we want to do is really rush an auditor. She understands what we've been going through. Um, and she also said that as long as it's really, as long as it's in there by the, by the 31st of December, um, we would be fine. Um, we told her we were pushing and we would try to get it to her by December 19th. And they're going to be meeting on this, um, in either mid-January or February. Schedule's off a little bit right now. And she said, um, that they would take that, if there is an issue, that they would take that under advisement.
Right, and I, also, I spoke with a representative from the Joint Legislative Auditing Committee and they told me that, but I have two concerns here. One is for the commission to do its fiduciary job and for the benefit of our citizens, we should have been informed of this. I should not have to call Tallahassee to find it out. And if I had not asked, when I asked, Charles provided me and everyone else here the information about what has been going on with Clarion and why it was late. Ultimately, the buck stopped with the commission. The commission is supposed to supervise the city manager. This is very important information for us to know. So, I, I think that all this information should have been provided and that the commission and the public should not have been unaware of it.
That's why I've reported to you for months that the audit is not ready.
Okay, that's very superficial information, which I think the whole commission needs to have this letter.
I get that, you feel that way. I get that.
Yes, well, actually, there are other people who feel that way too, that wasn't Tallahassee. Um, the other thing is, I am very concerned, um, about how long this has been going on with Clarion. And I looked at their contract today. I don't think they're keeping, um, I don't think they're fully fulfilling their contract.
Yeah, and if I can say something. So, first, I want to go back to when you said that I said that it would do December 31st. That question was asked. I've gone back and watched the video. I'm not the one that answered it, so that's where I was getting at. At that time, I did not know when the audit was due, and I'll be fully aware of that. Um, and as you stated, it's due June 30th. Um, I have taken steps. I don't think that it's the legal counsel's responsibility to see that the audit's done, but I have had multiple meetings with Charles, and I feel confident that this is going to get done. By the 19th, whether we write and explain to the state why it's not done or the audit gets done, I think that I have more than expressed the importance that we get this done. Um, the second thing, we're already in email contact with the Clarion about feeling that they're not living up to their contract that we signed.
Right, because this has been going on for a long time. I talked to Charles a number of months ago because it seemed apparent that when one person would leave, there wasn't a seamless transition. That's a failing, there was a couple other things in that contract. I mean, for example, I don't think they gave Charles adequate help in preparation of the budget, um, a number of things. And then, Charles, I had asked you, I think you mentioned that, oh, you've been, in your city manager's report, it says you've been using another outsourced to Clarion employee onsite once a week, um, and the act, to assist the acting Clarion finance director. So, it wasn't clear whether they're charging us extra for that, or are they absorbing that?
They, they charged us extra when she was replacing Jill, when Jill was out, and when Jill is out for, that'll be a separate charge. Otherwise, they've, between the two positions, they've scaled back the other position to accommodate this onsite position. So, between the two people.
So, we're paying the same?
Yes.
Okay, but, um, I mean, I looked at the contract and they, for example, the contract says they're supposed to give periodic reports to the city manager and the commission. We haven't had a report from them for months.
Well, I get, I was putting the monthly report from Jody in your, in my city manager's report.
Well, it, when you look at the contract, it should, it should be a little beefier. It should be a report from a Clarion. I don't, they just, I mean.
You know what they will report to us? That our finance department is an absolute mess and none of them, when they come in here, do they, they can't figure out what in the world we have done over these last years in order to get in that situation. So, then that person leaves and another person comes in because that person gets so frustrated or the questions.
Jody cut back because she was stressed out from coming here.
Yeah, she was stressed out from coming here, and then she got all these questions that were constantly, she was being hit with, and she just, she's stressed out and she's like, and she was the only one. She truly, truly, if we spent time to talk to him about this in his office, Jody, he thought, was going to be his shining light, and she burned right out. And so, we have a problem. Um, if, if you have a solution.
Right, that's just what I was going to ask.
If you have a solution, please.
Give it to us.
I mean, you're, you're.
You're badgering us what you're doing.
Please, by all means, make a recommendation. Because Charles, I know he's looking for a recommendation.
And they have the option to cancel us on 30 days.
And that's the other thing.
And that's what I was going to say. I think we have to walk a fine line here to try, we're trying to take other RFPs or approve to try to go in another direction. But if we push too much and they give us 30 days, in 30 days, we have nobody to run.
I'm, I'm well aware of that, which is why I asked Charles about this privately a number of months ago. I'm well aware of that. My concern is that the commission should be more updated on what the problems are. I really, after learning about all this, um, for the past two days and in the meeting, I don't feel prepared to make a recommendation. I think we should all talk about it. This is something we all need to know about and all talk about. But I can't just make a snap recommendation. I have been involved in the numerous conversations that others have been. But I certainly think that we need to be more up to date on what the problems are.
Okay.
Instead of having it.
Okay, let's move on to the next. Do you have another question for Charles?
Well, actually, um, this came out when we talked about, um, the contract with Clarion and doing an RFP. When Ms. Sykes spoke and then Captain Essery spoke, and this is on the legal side as well, um, actually, the sheriff has kind of deviated from what their contract says. Captain Essery explained that to us. Um, the sheriff's contract says that we are supposed to have five dedicated officers, and we're also supposed to have marked cars. We do not have those. And Captain Essery said, we do not have five dedicated officers, and he explained that in detail. He rotates them now. He doesn't feel that it's good enough experience. Um, but I, you know, that's not really the way to do it. And somehow, I think we need to address the fact that the sheriff has changed what they're providing. It's, it's not what's in the contract. Um, and is it possible to have that discussion with them? It may be wonderful, it may be something that we want, but the contract says specifically that neither party can make any lateral changes.
Okay.
If you, if you want us to, I mean, I can call Mr. Sharp.
Yeah, bring Mr. Sharp in.
Well, does the rest of the commission feel the same way?
I mean, I'm perfectly, I understand, I'm happy. Dedicated to me, dedicated to me is something very different. I think dedicated means we have somebody that's dedicated here on a 24/7 basis, not necessarily the same person, because they also explained that there's going to be people on vacation. And there's going to be people on maternity leave, and there's other things that's going to happen, and somebody else is going to have to step in and take that over. They're going to quit. So, that's going to be a constant turnover. For me, dedicated means that there's going to be somebody here dedicated 24/7. Commissioners, if you feel that you're not happy with the way this is currently happening, then by all means, um.
Well, my opinion is it's just that if it's in the contract, they should do it. If dedicated means that they've got one officer here, fine. If it means there's five of them that's supposed to be here in marked cars, that's what you should have.
Not at one time.
But that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But, you know, I, I understand the sheriff's department's, um, dealing maybe in not enough crime here to do it, but if it's in the contract, that's the way it should be. Um, they wouldn't want us to change the contract, and what can change is the contract. Um, if we're going to have some changes, we'll sit down and discuss it. It's not a us versus them deal. So, I think if, uh, you know, we have issues with it, we should do the right thing, bring it up right to the captain and say, hey, look, this is what we thought was getting, this is what we're not getting. Let's clarify. Let's not have any bickering or, or stuff going on. Let's just come on out. We thought this is what's supposed to be in the contract. It's not. This is what it is. We'll come to a mutual agreement.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to say. The Captain Essery made it very clear that he has changed from the original methodology. Um, some people said they were happy with that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it. Um, or maybe there is, but he definitely informed us that he was not using the same system that is in the contract.
He is not the one that negotiated that, and so I want to be real clear that he did not say that he's changing the contract and the methodology. He said, this is the way that it's operating, and that's how he's operating and rotating them out. He's not the one that did the contract.
We have guaranteed five deputies.
Yes.
It's not always going to be Bill, Frank, Cindy, Joe, and Harry. It's going, it's going to be five officers.
I think that's a given. I don't think the name of the deputy.
That's what she, that's what.
That's what she's saying. It's got to be Harry, Joe, Bob.
That they want, that that's what they're, that's what they want, so. Bobby, Ron, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think if we have more officers in Crescent City than LA.
I'm happy.
And I'm very happy about it myself. And, and, and a time passed when I, I, when I'm riding uptown or coming to Crescent City, I don't see three or four police cars over there all around. So, I, I feel better by me being a lone resident of Crescent City, but we got no protection in LA.
So, Commissioner Toledo, are you wanting, I mean, so what are you trying to get at? Do you want their names? Are you wanting?
No, 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 no.
So, what are you wanting?
What I'm saying is, is that the captain said that they are no longer going to try to keep the same five officers here on a regular basis, which they never promised us, obviously, that it could always be the same five because there's vacation and whatever. But they were going to try to specifically assign people here. He says they are no longer doing that. He's following a different system. And all I am saying is that for, as a, as a general principle, as a precedent that we talked about earlier, that Crescent City should make sure, when, I'm sorry, is somebody else talking?
Commissioner, go ahead, please.
Um, that we should do the right thing, as Commissioner Bailey said, it's not an adversarial thing, but we should review the contract and make sure that it says what, that it says what the actual delivery is. And I think it's a different method, and I, I think we should talk to them about that.
Okay.
You just don't.
Well, I have a little question as well.
Commissioner, I mean, Captain Essery, do you want to come up, please? I really want to call this meeting.
Yeah, this is entirely different meeting right now, and it should be taken out at a different meeting.
This is under Commissioner's comments, please.
Um, also, you have to realize that the challenges we deal with with filling these positions. So, basically, what happens with us right now is I run my district short, so I make sure that Crescent City has individuals in this city. And normally, like I've said before, police officers seem to gravitate toward one another. They like to stay together. When there's somebody that is, that is, when I say, it depends on what we're calling dedicated. Dedicated to Crescent City to me, to me means that you can have 24/7 coverage. And it goes as far as even, and I know there's times that we get really, really busy, that your Crescent City unit goes, he has to go to jail or whatever the case may be. Um, you've always got that coverage in Crescent City, and that's a sergeant's responsibility when that Crescent City guy, if he's got a full ship, if the Crescent City officer deputy goes to jail, that they gravitate someone else into here so that that coverage is still there. Now, there is circumstances where somebody goes to jail, they have a hot call. That deputy, that's really the county deputy, would go and have to go to a call. Just as before, when we worked very well with, when the Crescent City Police Department was here, when we were, when we needed backup, they would go outside of the city limits to back up us on calls, as does the city fire department sometimes when we have, you know, major traffic crashes and whatnot. So, it's all a working relationship. But the, just like I said earlier, if I had a deputy who was brand-new out of training, and right now, we're in the 4,000 case numbers, back when I was on the road, we were in the 16,000 case numbers. So, we were getting a lot more calls and we were seeing, writing a lot more reports. We're getting trainees, because our crimes are so low right now, we're getting trainees who are not getting out of, getting out of their final phases, only working one or two burglaries. So, they really don't have a really good investigative background experience of what they need to be doing when they're going to that burglary. So, if I'm, and using Crescent City as an example, with an average of 68 calls per service, I believe is what I said, and with the, the low number of reports, they're just not getting that experience. So, when Crescent City residents get someone to come to their house and they get a brand-new deputy who is only working one or two burglaries, they're getting a better service if they've got somebody there that has a lot more experience. So, as that deputy goes out into those counties, now you have to remember, I looked up the calls for a deputy sheriff earlier today for a gentleman because he didn't believe how many calls per service they answered. One deputy that I looked up answered 245 calls per service, one deputy. So, that tells you when they're, when they're getting their, their, not even 68 calls, they're, they're in Crescent City itself because their day's off and everything. When you divide that up between the individuals and the data that are working, so you, when you divide that up by, let's say, four, because you have four shifts working, 68 divided by four, just a rough number, help me out here, I'm not good with numbers, is around, it's in the twenties. So, you've got a deputy who is in the county answering 245 calls per service, and you've got a city deputy who is answering 20 calls per service. He's just not getting the experience. And that's why I feel that it is, you're getting a better round, well-rounded person, that is.
Okay, because I just, that's what you said last time. I understand that. My only point is that it has nothing to do with your professional judgment and all that. Is that Crescent City should operate in a business-like manner. And if the methodology is going to change, then we should true up the paperwork and the contract and make sure that it reflects what we're actually doing. I'm not, I understand completely what you're saying. It's a matter of being business-like and keeping our paperwork and work. So, that's mine with me, if nobody else is worried about it. I actually have two more happier and very important issues, but I totally understand what you're talking about.
Okay, again, like I said, if you want, if you guys want to go to the contract and define what that, and define what that word means, that's really out of my review, so.
Exactly.
I got one thing before you go. And I'm not going to, and this is not adversarial or whatever. But I, you know, I was here when Joe gave us those emblems on the side of the cars. And they had to change it because we changed them. Have those been implemented yet?
No, they haven't.
Because I just had to put up to close to a car.
And that is something that the Colonel and Allison were trying to design at the time.
Mm-hmm.
And we're trying, that's, that's going to be a question that I would have to have the Colonel.
Well, I just didn't, I put up to a car yet. I just kind of want to see one, you know, see them on the cars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have two more issues that.
And then I'm closing this, I'm closing this meeting out, and just, so go ahead, finish up, please.
Yeah, um, I know the high school band performed for us. Yeah, I know the high school band performed for us on Monday. They did a lovely job. The high school band is always very short of money. It is customary when musicians perform to give them some kind of remuneration. Charles, do we have money in our, whatever, we usually have a thousand dollars in the grants and aid budget?
The commission, we moved that, the commission budget aid to other organizations. I believe there's $2,000 in there.
Okay, so I would like us to consider, since they took their time and effort to come here and the band director not only does her professional work, she has to raise all the money for the trips and the instruments because most of the students can't afford them, that we consider giving them a stipend of between $300 and $500 for the band program. And it would be greatly appreciated, I know.
Is that a motion?
No, we're not, I don't think we can take a motion at right now, Karen.
That's up to you.
If it's not closed, you can take a motion.
Well, I think we should probably also, I mean, Jolene is, she is outstanding and I've been in a lot of contact with her. I would want to help her out, but I think before we do something like that, maybe we should also talk to Princeful Adams. That would be my recommendation.
Well, I talked to Jolene and she's all for it and he pretty much, she's pretty much a self-executing entity, from what I understand over the years and of her performance. She's expected to raise the money for her program. I certainly have no objection to looking into it, but given that they have performed for us and they've done so for free and they don't operate for free, I think it would be a very nice gesture.
I absolutely, I agree. I agree. I just don't want us, as you're talking about precedent, that we don't set any type of precedent because we also have football, we have, there are other, you know, other things that they have.
They took their time out.
I understand.
Came to a sudden.
I'm not, I'm not, believe me, I'm not trying to say no. I just don't know that... But if the commission, if somebody wants to make a motion, by all means, make a motion. How much money do we have left in that? I know that goes to the library as well. Has the library already done theirs? Nancy?
Yes, so they must be done.
Thank you.
I'll double check, but I think...
And I'm not saying we have to, I'm not saying we have to do it tonight, but they performed. We have money in that category.
You know the one that's called the lack of support them?
Yeah.
I don't necessarily think that the commissioner of the city does that, but I'm not saying it can't be done. But I think I understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to get some clarity on that. Whoever, whoever, we're calling this period, so we won't be out of order.
And that's all, is I just, absolutely, I support taking care of them. Those, and a lot of those children, they've just started. This is their first opportunity and I was so appreciative that they did what they did. And they did, they did an outstanding job and thankfully, they were on the news. I mean, they made the paper, so I was tickled with that too.
Right, I mean, they're musicians. They play, they play, we pay something. And the other thing is, and this is just to consider if we want to discuss it on the 21st when we talk about the budget. It's my understanding that the legislative delegation meeting is January 9th. I was told that you're on the agenda. I'm assuming, since we don't have any specific priorities, that you're just going to basically talk about our general needs. You're going to provide information. But if we wanted to ask for a specific thing, we would have to discuss that.
We would, and that's something that I think we were going to talk about on the 21st, but if there was anything for us to try to get some criteria, the fire station already spoke to Representative Payne and he is hopefully going to be able to come down and look because the fire station went well over what we had expected it to be budgeted at. And so, that would be one of the legislative. But last year, we did this too. So, last year, we went to, you know, it's everybody, they pull everybody in, all the municipalities. And, but yeah, on the 21st, that's something that we were going to put on the agenda.
Okay, so we're going to talk about that.
So, we can talk about that so that everybody can be on the same page. So, we'll put that. Anybody else?
I just...
Yes, sir?
We can do it on the February meeting.
Yeah, oh, the February meeting, you're right.
I mean, we can put it on the 21st, that's fine. I just didn't want to spring it up on the last second.
Yes, right.
Put a 21st on it.
Yeah, let's everybody pull their calendars, Karen, if we can start having a calendar. Because we got, we're filling up for January, so maybe at the meeting.
I, at the meeting.
I saw that. I saw that, so...
Do you want an actual calendar?
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so now it's all listed, so we can go and put it down on our calendar, so let's just kind of, thank you. Okay, and with that, if that's it, this meeting, do any have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move.
Sir.
Okay, on favor, aye?
Aye.